This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call to order the Monterey Select Board on June 3rd at 6:01 PM. We have all three members of the board present here in general hall. And our first item of business is a poll petition on Brett Road. So they're adding in a couple of polls to fortify the line according to Roger. It was actually something that was requested by the state for us.
Yeah, I spoke with Adam Morris. I think he's a park superintendent up there and he had actually made the request to National Grid. Because at that intersection where Brett Road meets Swamp Road or whatever, there's a few poles up there where there's too much, I believe there's too much distance between the poles. So the lines are drooping way down. So he made a request for safety because up the road is where they do those events with youth up at the camp. And so he requested that National Grid come in and put in some poles. I think it's the two poles to lift up the lines from drooping down, so.
Any questions or concerns? If only a butter on both sides of the road is the state forest.
Yeah.
And then no one lives past there.
No, there's no.
Yeah, Melissa online for DCR.
Hi, my name's Melissa Patterson-Sarrell. I'm the Assistant Regional Director for the West Region. And also the Acting District Manager for the Lakes Region and I work with Adam Morris. So he spoke to me about this project and just wanted to say that DCR supports this project and it'll definitely increase public safety. Also, those power lines are connected to the fire alarm at Swan Lodge. So that will certainly help with our safety concerns there.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Can I make a motion that we accept the poll petition for Brett Road?
I'll second.
Any other discussion before we call a vote? All right, we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, to unanimous vote in favor of the poll petition. Let's get that signed and sent over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're gonna jump around a little bit. I'm gonna get into address people who have finally joined us. So why don't we get right into the plumbing, gas and wiring inspector compensations? So Don, I think this is something that came up a couple of years ago. I looked and I looked at this Life Board minutes. And at the time, we raised the fee from 60 to 75, but we agreed to give 69 per inspection to each inspector, right? And it ran that way for a couple of years.
Yes. Okay. And I was, the electrical inspector came and asked me about increasing it to the full 75, where they would, because other communities, I think when I was talking to Don, you thought, we think New Marlboro, or they did it when you were down there, was collecting the full amount, so.
Yeah, several times is it compensated with the full inspection amount.
How much is the full inspection amount?
Seventy-five dollars.
Bars or?
Well, that's, I think it was, I think it was.
Yeah, that's, we based it on the average of what everybody was charging across virtue count.
And my understanding of the process and talking to Don is that every inspection costs seventy-five dollars. You don't pay for the, you're paying for the inspection. You go and you enter in your information for the project. And then the project requires a certain number of inspections. And then you are, you get charged the seventy-five dollars per inspection and that's what we pay the inspector.
And we're currently paying them sixty-nine, you said?
Sixty-nine dollars.
But we charge seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah. So the other six has been collected into the revolving fund.
And we've always thought that the town should keep some of that money to pay for insurance, pay for the permitting program online. But the building department, part of their fees is based on the estimated cost of electrical plumbing and gas as well. So it's not like you're double dipping, but do you want to pay those guys? I support it because of the fact that it's been four years and they don't get a cola.
Right.
You know, gas has just gone up and I think it's a reasonable request from the inspectors to be compensated seventy-five per inspection.
Because we don't pay for travel or anything, we just pay.
That's correct. Yeah, they just pay per inspection, no travel.
Am I correct that the fees from the building department are generally larger than the expenses on the building department?
On the building department? I would say.
That's a whole, yeah.
It's a whole, yeah.
That's a whole, yeah.
I think one of my hesitations had been some part of the inspection should go toward overhead. But I never thought about the point you just made. When they calculate the whole building, the estimated cost of the project, that includes electrical plumbing.
Correct.
So in some way.
It is in that.
It is already included. I mean, it's all theoretical. I mean, I think the next question is if we're going to just take in seventy-five and pay out seventy-five, our revolving fund probably shouldn't have thirty thousand dollars in it.
Yeah, that's something I'm gonna talk to treasurer.
We're just doing the best we can.
To talk to the town treasurer, the town accountant about that. Why, why is that way? And it's a little confusing.
Is there anything else that that revolving fund gets used for?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not legally, because this stated purpose, this stated what comes in is electrical plumbing.
And gas.
The gas inspections. And what can be paid out is compensation for those inspections. So if we wanted to pay for a part of permitizer, some binders, we couldn't can't really.
Out of there. So what do you think, I mean, assuming we can change it, the question would be what should that amount be?
Well, I think if we keep, I think to return to a decision that was made a couple of years ago, we can charge seventy-five for the inspection and pay out seventy-five. It gives, you know, it recognizes the increase in the cost of everything.
I'm fine with that. You just raised the second issue that I was questioning. Like, does it need to have thirty K in it? If it's getting money in and getting money out, why do we need to keep?
We don't, we need to keep five thousand or something, just to make sure.
I'm just questioning what the amount we should set that at.
Well, there is, there is actually in the, this is why I have to go back and talk to the town accountant, because there are minimums, it has to be on the roll of it, so.
But the carryover limit in that account is twenty-five thousand.
And we're a little over that.
Which if you take into consideration what's coming in and what's coming out, why would you ever want twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Probably we should come up with a reasonable number so that, you know, we can always, there's always some inspections that we may have paid out and not got in or something. And then that could be our carryover limit.
But I have to sit down again with the town accountant, town treasurer, and just sort of go over where the money is from the online permitting, where permitizes are coming from and what the accounts are going into. Because it's a little confusing right now with revenue funds and the revolving fund. So I just have to kind of double check all that stuff.
And then what we would do probably is go back to town meeting at some point and adjust the annual carryover limit down and free up that money for.
Vote it up in the general.
It would end up basically free cash at the end of the day.
Yep.
Right. Okay. So I think we should support this and go ahead and raise it, raise their initial full seventy-five that we're charging.
So you're making a motion?
I am making a motion. I make a motion that we raise.
I'll second the motion.
Any other questions or comments before we vote?
We'll put a date on that, July 1st, July 1st.
Keep it simple?
Yeah, simply, yeah.
All right, we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that carries unanimously. Anything else we have to do, Don?
Probably not, but we could discuss.
Not right now.
Not at the moment.
That would be another time.
I have to be in touch with you because we're doing our annual appointments. And I just want to get everything squared away. I know we have a few alternates and just want to double check that those are all right. And then the other thing I wanted to do is minutia, but I think you have four titles now. Building Commissioner, local building inspector, code enforcement officer, or zoning enforcement.
I'm not the local.
No?
No, don't have that title.
Who are your building?
I have the title of building commissioner.
And director of municipal inspections.
Right.
So I just didn't know if we could, that one is bizarre, but that one's off schedule because we did it mid-year. And I just want to wrap that up and I want to make it one three-year appointment. Does that basically sound great?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll follow up.
A lot of towns do it and the language is until due cause, you know, instead of reappointing and reappointing and reappointing.
Yeah.
So that, that's probably the town meeting, change of language.
That might be. So you, but you would agree that building commissioner and code, is it code or zoning enforcement officer?
Well, yeah.
Because I have it down as code in old.
Zoning enforcement officer is because of the state law, the chapter 143, it's, they have that title and that responsibility unless it says in there, unless someone else is, unless the town appoints someone else, so.
So what do you think your titles should be?
Should be building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, and then also the director.
Director. Which basically just makes Don responsible for the whole department.
Right.
Instead of the electrical plumbing, gas, getting kind of like.
Right.
Just directly reported to the Life Board.
Right.
Right.
So it's funny how with the list of appointments, things get in there one way or another and then they just get carried over again and again.
So maybe we should talk about those guys giving three dollars per inspection and maybe I get three for it.
Well, that was one of the points I made to Roger when we were discussing it was, you know, we pay Rog, you know, and you to supervise. And I think like you said though, that's covered by the.
Salary.
Inspection fee.
Right.
And on the whole, unlike most departments, we actually take in more of it. Great. Well, moving on.
Thank you, Don, appreciate it.
Thanks, Don, good to meet you.
Dennis, you're next in line. Can, or are you here for something in particular?
Uh, no, just.
Just the, the letter of support for the ADA?
Yes.
And it has two things on here. It's a letter of support for the ADA walkway as well as construction of an ADA compliant ramp.
Yay, I really want to see this happen.
And I did talk to Dennis about that and Dennis is working on both of those processes.
Thank you, senor. Once again.
Doesn't want to have to make it.
I don't want blue.
I'm just seeing.
So that's great. And it goes to show why it's good to have an ADA assessor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which at the time seems to like work and.
Yeah, wait, there we go. You can do something good.
Are we technically still not supposed to talk about the community center award? Because it's not the date yet.
Yes, yeah. We did, I realized that Dennis and I, Dennis came up to me and I totally forgot, but yes, six twenty-seven.
I vaguely knew about that, but at some point we need to sit down, maybe you, me and Roger are starting.
Yeah.
And part of that, part of the answer to that question is the ADA walkway grant. So technically not allowed to talk about that. Hopefully no one sees this.
What was that?
What?
What? I can't remember.
All right. And Kyle, since you're here, we can talk about the kamama, noise concerns?
Nancy is also on.
Yeah.
I, for me, I said as much as I really thought I needed to do last time.
Yeah.
With the documentation, everything else, I'm here to see if anyone else is talking about it to either clarify my points of view or to support them or to provide a different perspective. Nancy, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I don't, I just saw it on the agenda and was just curious if there were any new points or any additional information that you needed. So we were both here just to be supportive.
Yeah, I mean, I think my goal is to, is to get a zoning specific noise ordinance base, noise bylaw for commercial zoning or commercial enterprises. That's where my head is at.
And I, I thought it was a good idea when you raised it and I still think so.
I would like to also add that for short-term rentals, I think that's, that seems to be the general move, one that a lot of towns trying to address. People who are not familiar with the community come in and being a little bit insensitive, for lack of a better word.
Well, and you know, they have even less incentive. Like if you live somewhere, there's a downstream effect of being constantly rude to your neighbors, you develop bad behavior towards your neighbors and there's usually pushback. But if you're there for a weekend or a week, you really, you're not going to be around to get that impact. So you think that you can do whatever, so. It took three times.
Sorry for getting distracted.
Okay.
I think also just to mention that there were some mattresses dumped by the side of the road and the health inspector is on top of that.
Uh, yeah, so the health inspector basically wrote them a letter about, it looks like they're changing out a bunch of mattresses from their facilities. They just dumped them in a giant pile, which, by the way, I mentioned this to Roger, it's illegal for at least one other reason, which is mattresses are required to be recycled by state law in Massachusetts. And by dumping them there, they have ruined all of those mattresses for recycling. They might be able to buy some of them, but.
I talked to Don Tirico about that today and he said he saw a dumpster there today. But more than likely they'll, if they put the mattresses in wherever they take it, they'll pull the mattress and find them.
Yeah.
There's, he told me they've been there for at least two years.
The mattress?
Really?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, maybe you get one, but it'll be.
So there is a black hole where it used to be in Staples. I'm paging myself. Where the camp Staples used to be is sort of an area that they just dump a lot of things. They also posted on their website, they're having an Israeli market celebration on Father's Day, which includes beer and singing, arts and crafts in the Israeli market, which seems great, but doesn't sound like a camp event. And I don't know if they're having, if they're selling things, whether they need a permit. What?
Is it open to the public?
Yeah. I don't know if they need a permit to have this kind of stuff or not.
Technically, they would have to submit something to us.
Yeah.
Because if they're selling liquor, they definitely have to, there's a whole compliance with that.
So I don't know if they're selling or giving it away. I'm not in the position to ask the camp director or the owner to clarify his view of things.
Well, this for Roger.
Yeah.
Well, that's the long-term plan.
But they need a liquor license too.
Yeah, yeah, they need to do a bunch of stuff.
So let this be the, I'm sorry, this is being recorded, right? So I can't say something that this is now the cash cow or, you know? You know? Liquor, right.
It's too bad, it's our relationship.
Yeah, it really is.
That's the long-term plan and we'll try to get you posted as things work.
Appreciate it.
And very strong and smart recommendation last time for Nancy and I to think about writing something for Monterey News. To sort of explain why this is of community interest. And Nancy and I have talked about doing that work.
Great.
Whether it be a single article or a few. So I think.
I think it would be a big help, especially prior, like if we're going to try to do this in November. If people have a chance to really understand an issue and think about it, it's also much, often a more productive conversation and there's more understanding when it comes to making a decision. I think it's hard when the first time you encounter something is on the warrant. You're like, what? Why?
It makes sense.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. Well, thanks for joining us.
For talking about.
Yeah, of course.
How about the difficulty?
Thanks for opening the conversation up.
Okay, so next, I think we're gonna move on to the police chief contract. So we're not quite ready to sign tonight, but Roger and I did meet with Brian and agreed to some changes in principle, which I can, we can talk through. And if you all agree, we'll move forward with just finalizing the order.
Okay.
The way that it's been for many years is that the on-call officer at night, which is when no one's on duty from 12 AM to 8 AM, gets a hundred dollars per week to be on duty for seven nights. And they would swap nights out. Back when Gareth was the chief and Brian was sergeant, they would just alternate weeks. So they would, there would be some even split. And when we first went to one chief and two full-time officers, one of them lived closer and they were able to alternate shifts. Now our full-time officers, one lives two towns over and the other lives five or more towns over. So it's a lot has fallen on Brian. And I think it's kind of a shortfall of the system because we need someone to be on call, but they need to be close and all that said, what we, what Roger and I discussed with Brian was changing that from a hundred dollars per week to two hundred and eighty dollars per week. So it would be forty dollars per day. So it'd be forty dollars to be on call from 12 AM to 8 AM. And I, one of the reasons that I like, it's quite, it's quite a bump. I don't think that that number's been adjusted for many years. We could go back and do the digging, but from what Brian was saying, it sounds like it was something that Gareth was doing for a long time. It certainly hasn't been adjusted at any point in the recent past. I think, I look at that bump and in one, in some ways it's a tough pill to swallow. I mean, it adds almost ten thousand dollars per year.
I was just going to do that, thank you.
But on the other hand, it's in lieu of hiring another officer eventually.
Right.
Right. So it's someone willing to be on call from home. And we can, you know, it's more affordable in some ways than hiring another full-time officer or more to have someone staffed in town. And it can only work as long as we have someone that lives within a town or two. If all of a sudden, and I, yeah, actually, that's one of the requirements of our police chief position, right? Is they need to live closer, move into, within town. But for our police officer full-time positions, we don't have that requirement. And so we're fortunate that, you know, we have one now that only lives a couple of towns over. We could end up in a situation where both of our full-time officers live an hour away. And what do we do when Brian wants one night where he's, does not require to be close and ready to go?
So I'm concerned that, I do think it's a burden to have one person maybe on call every time. I mean, I.
I think too what we did is by making it forty dollars a night, we can, they can actually, it's a little easier to do that. So they can be like, if Brian does want to take a weekend off, he can, you know, assign basically that forty dollars would go to whoever the officer is.
Would that work for Karen?
Same thing for like vacations, you know, if Brian takes a whole week off, someone, whether or not they can, it goes to one person or to a couple of people, however, however it works. It just makes it a little easier to say it's forty-dollar a day function, here, here's, here's a dollar.
Instead of, it used to be, right now it's fourteen twenty-eight per day. So it's like to ask an employee to say, will you be on call from 12 AM to 8 AM, ready to go?
For fifty dollars.
For fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. It's kind of a hard ask and now this could bring it more into the realm. We still have the problem of a lot is on the police chief if there aren't officers who live at all.
Yeah.
Of course, so.
What's the, is it in the budget? Do we have it?
Yes. And so when we, I think when we added a full-time position and we went from a chief and a sergeant and most of our other shifts filled in by part-timers to a chief and two full-time officers, we have, since then, we've had a large part-time overtime budget.
Yeah.
And it's well within our, it's a sixty thousand dollar a year budget. And right now it just covers the occasional.
Part-time.
Part-time.
Overtimes.
Overtime, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's, I think, I don't even think they've hit fifty percent of it this year yet.
Okay.
Here's what I, here's what I don't like, right? You have someone that's, is on salary and then this was a complete race over the school district. You have someone's on salary and then you add in stipends, that kind of muddies things up. But on the other hand, I think this sets us up for the future, also to prevent burnout.
Yeah.
If you're gonna be on call three hundred and sixty-five nights a year and it's not like on call for maybe the fire department where you can show up or maybe if you know, other people will, it's like you are the only on-call person. That's a recipe for burnout.
It really is.
So that's, did anyone have any questions or?
The only thing commented, I think Brian was gonna ask for another police officer in next year's budget. He's talked a little bit about that.
He mentioned it, so. He just mentioned it.
And they changed the idea.
To the degree this is feasible, I'd much rather do this.
Sure, well, I agree with that, but, you know, I'm just commenting.
Yeah.
Cross that bridge when we get there.
I think some of that has to do with the struggles of part-time help and everything, so.
Well, I think the other thing is that the schedule of the two police officers' work is pretty intense.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of it is, what, two shifts on Saturday, two shifts on Sunday. You know, that's, a lot of people wouldn't do that. It's working right now, but.
Well, one other possible option, and I'm not commenting on the current people, but just one other staffing option would be you overlap two people on the weekends. So you have one, you work Saturday to Wednesday. Another person works Thursday to Sunday. Right, and we talked about that we went to three officers.
I sort of feel like part of that problem could be alleviated if they're willing to change the way their schedule.
Yeah.
Like fill the shifts as you need to, but don't, don't do the, don't shift. Have the people rotate shifts, that's what we do on their work. But at the end of the day, they have to figure out what works.
Yeah, I think it's a group, it's a small group, they're stretched, so they have to work it out.
Yeah, and it also seems to be working well.
A lot is, it's not broke.
So.
If someone leaves, it could mother.
Yes, yeah.
No, I just think we're telling them.
So I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, I think we haven't addressed it in a long time. Fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents a night to be on call. And I mean, realistically, I've talked to him about it, like it means that he can't really even have a drink when he goes out to dinner. He can't have a drink because he might get called.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't, I am not a teetotaler, but I'm not a heavy drinker. But I could see that never being able to do it because you're on call every single freaking night, that's, that becomes an imposition because it's a never instead of a occasional, you know? And that, I think that's hard. Never mind like getting off the middle one, I think.
Do we have any other real changes, Roger?
We talked about a couple of things. I think we were going to make a slight adjustment to the second paragraph in there, which was compensation, because it makes it sound like he receives the salary at the beginning of the year.
Yes.
Kind of re-verbage that because it just says, at the beginning of each fiscal year, the chief shall receive the salary. So it makes it sound like it gets dumped. So we're gonna change a little bit of verbiage there. And then the other thing was just removing, it's a way over here on duties number sixteen. It says the chief shall be in charge of the Blackboard Connect Mass Notification. And so we're just gonna remove Blackboard Connect because that's a specific piece of software.
Right.
They're thinking of going to, what is it, a red or red, one of those, Code Red. And so we don't want to make it specific.
State-related communications.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll put something in there. And I think that was, that was the only thing that we discussed, everything else is okay with.
All right, so we all agree in principle, we'll finalize the word.
Sounds good. All right.
Do you want to stay with the police department for one more thing?
Well, any questions on that? Yes, police department.
This is a memorandum of understanding, it just needs your signature.
So this is for the breathalyzer and the cell?
Cell.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was reading that. I mean, I probably read it, because we had designers before. But I don't think I noticed that, sure, officers are responsible for bringing food in and lockup, I'm like.
She had to go get food.
What can you, what can you get when you're?
Yeah, go get a pizza.
Oh, she said she went to coffee. I'm like, what is she gonna get at coffee?
The pizza, the single pizzas are very good.
They, they do, they do have some pizzas.
Housing committee appointment, so planning board sifted through potential interested people and came up with a list of seven. I would picture this as a one-year appointment through June thirtieth, twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six.
Works for me.
You want?
Yeah.
So, when there are staggered appointments, then the capacity continues on, that the institutional knowledge isn't necessarily lost. If all those seven people choose not to return.
Yeah.
Then there's no real memory of what's happened for the prior year. It's a little messy, but at least then there's some long-term planning. Let's do it.
I can totally see why to do that. And also, what we typically find in these one-year appointments is people come back year after year. It also gives people an easy out when they can no longer serve. And we, on the flip side, have a lot of three-year appointments where sometimes people move or get a different job and can't do it anymore. And then there's a whole, we have to get a resignation letter from them and sometimes we don't get it. And it can become a ordeal, so.
Totally understand that.
I think we'll appoint them for one year with the hope that many of them return, which is what we see a lot.
I think there's also some lack of clarity at the moment about whether this is an ad hoc committee or will end up a standing committee. And I can see arguments both ways. I personally think it's certainly gonna be more than a year. But, um, since I think it's unclear exactly what their purview will be or their assignments will be, um, did the plan board ask for them to have a particular term of appointment?
No, not that I recall.
Who are you to do?
No, I don't remember them asking for that.
I think they need to ask to appoint a housing committee.
As far as that's hard to remember.
Do they know who the chair will be?
I think usually it can be elected.
Yes, it does. So, yeah, and I think out of seven people, we've, we did the renewable energy working group. We did the open space and recreation plan and like Garfield working group. And with renewable energy, it was kind of started as a very ad hoc, short-term thing and it's developed into a longer goal.
Right.
And every year, there's someone whose schedule changes and they drop out. But Peter stuck through all of it and other members have at least put in a couple of years and that's what we, I think the organize, the board, even though we came up with a mission for them, they always develop their own mission in some ways. And it becomes clear once they start the work what's actually possible and what's not. I mean, there's so many ideas floating out around about housing and oftentimes, a lot of them are, are dead ends and you have to find what is worth pursuing. So I think one, it's also, it's just an easy out as volunteers' lives change.
Understood. So.
But it may turn out the good, right? We end up making a continuing work.
It's just, it's, it's a, it's a long-term issue.
It definitely, and a year won't be enough to, to fruition on.
It might be one charge for them. Think about whether they need a multi-year term after that.
Yeah.
And then put that on their responsibility to think, cause this is a long-range aspirational committee.
And it's a long-range problem. It's not going away in a ten seconds.
All right, well, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we take, uh, that we appoint, what is it, seven people. Ken Basler, Stephen Moore, Trevor Hurst, Benjamin Drive, Kaplan, Jennifer Brown, Tom Rye, and Carl Mead. Do the housing committee appointment for one year back to July first.
Until June thirty, twenty-twenty-six.
Any questions? Call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimously carries.
Is Karen Sean's?
No, I actually don't. That's one person I don't recognize.
Okay. Okay.
So, the next item is the memorandum of understanding with BRPC toward the green community designation. And it was time-sensitive, so I saw that.
Okay.
And I emailed it out last Friday.
We re-mailed it out to.
To, uh, the Bertrand Regional Plan, that's what it's done.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and the long and short of it is, BRPC is gonna help the town get its green communities designation.
Yes.
I mean, it's, the town did ninety percent of what needed to be done and the hard, the pain points, really, of stretch code and the solar zoning.
Yeah, there was an issue that had to, there was an issue, from my understanding, is we didn't have enough buildings to, um, to make their, make it.
The energy savings, yeah.
The, the energy savings. So they've since passed, I don't know.
They've changed what.
They changed the rules of what could be.
Yeah.
So they actually allowed for, like, the fire company house, they allowed, the firehouse, they allowed for that. And I think that was the one piece, that one building helps us get into the, uh, into the place where we're supposed to be, so.
Oddly enough, I saw a grant for a charging station.
Good.
You need to have proof that the town owns an electric vehicle. You got the.
So you have to have a vehicle before you can use a charging station, instead of.
And they said they wouldn't take.
And I say, to buy a vehicle that you can't charge in order to get a grant to build the charger.
Not only did you have to have proof that you owned an electric vehicle, it couldn't be like a purchase order or invoice, it had to be a title.
Oh, really?
So you, you couldn't be on order. You have to have anyone, the chicken or the egg.
It seems like a perfect time to ask people if they wanted to donate an electric car.
I know God is just wrecked, it's total, we could fuck bring it here and you'd lose the title.
The problem is. It's not even, it's not even just an electric car because it needs to be a vehicle that the town can use in some way, right? So if, like, one of the things that came up a couple of weeks ago is an electric cruiser for the police. But it, it turns out to be harder than you think because a lot of those vehicles are not really appropriate for, they're, they're not chase capable, they're not appropriate for carrying the, a kind of equipment and supplies that they have to carry with them or have gun lockups in them or have all these other things that you need if you're a cop car, so.
Even the hybrid is a chase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I tell you, electric car, it's quicker than the internal combustion engine car.
Didn't they have the highest zero to sixty?
Yeah, they did, yeah.
The highest one?
They had like one of the quickest years.
Two sixties, yeah. So I wonder why they're not ready to chase them.
It probably has to do with the, the suspension.
Yeah.
It's probably the suspension.
Uh, sure.
So the next item is the Parks Commission vacancy. So Chris.
Chris Anderson resigned. He resigned. He gave that to Amanda.
Okay.
And we would typically make an appointment until the next election. We would also typically adderize the position for a couple of weeks.
To see who was interested.
To see who's interested, so.
Do you know of anyone who is interested?
There's a couple of people. There's one person who's came to the last Parks Commission meeting, but he's not a registered voter in town.
Gotcha.
So we are legally allowed to appoint a, someone who's not a registered voter in town. But as soon as the next election comes around, he wouldn't be able to run in it.
Unless just thinking of becoming a resident.
Like John, yeah, right. With stuff.
Eleven.
Right. And that's the point John left me three or four years ago when we talked about this, that we shouldn't entirely eliminate the prospect of someone who's not a registered voter in town. As I remember John.
Correct, correct point.
That said, I think if you have a, someone who could run in the election and someone who couldn't, we would appoint a person. So, all that said, I would.
Want to go to Parks Commission? You sit right here.
In so many ways above two, but I'm not a full-time resident up here yet.
There you go. I get you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Um, so that said, I think it'd be good if we just set a timeframe and post it and then make a decision.
Where did you post it last time?
Um, so you can put it up on the town website and there's an appointment request form.
Yeah, yeah, see.
Then you could put, put it on the Google.
So do we, do you just like put it in the news and announcements?
Yeah, and this is the problem, right? You can't find anyone to do it. We couldn't find anyone to run for the seat and then you post it and you get five people.
Yeah.
But.
Um, how emergent is it? Could we put a little, lay up a little something to go in the next Monterey News?
We could. I mean, my legitimate fear is that we get three or four people that are interested. And then we say, no, thank you, which is tough to tell someone who's willing to volunteer their time.
Well, the parks has to make the decision, right?
Um, we share responsibility.
If we're to force people to step up and say they're interested, then they can all expect to be appointed with, to one position.
No, I agree. So when, it happened a couple of years ago with tree warden.
Right.
I twisted someone's arm to run as a write-in for tree warden because we knew the tree warden didn't want to accept it. But he was on the ballot. He put his name in, unfortunately lost by a few votes because of the write-in campaign. And then we posted it, right? I think you were both here for this. And then we had multiple good candidates. And then someone who you twisted their arm to try to get them to do it and then they agreed to volunteer their time. You say, actually, never mind, no, thank you. So that's, that's the only, that's the only tough part about it, which is just part of, it is what it is.
So what I'm just saying.
It's tough when these things kind of get figured out at the election where they're supposed to be figured out.
Right, but I'm just saying, if we put out there, since we're like a year away from the election essentially, if we ran a little thing in the news and posted on the Google group saying, hey, there's a vacancy in the Parks Commission because someone needed to resign, um, if you're interested, please reach out to the select board. If we get one person and we're not twisting their arse, if we get four people, then we have to figure out who has the best qualifications. Or, you know, if you're interested, please fill out the, we have a volunteer thing on there.
Yeah, an appointment request.
Appointment request form, right? So we just say, if you're interested, please fill out the appointment request form. It's on the website.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's what we do. No, it is, it is what we do.
But I just think if we ask people, we're not twisting their arse.
Yes.
And if multiple people step forward, then they have to expect if, if there's one post and five people, then we're only gonna pick one. We're not making extra four posts.
Yeah. So that would be my advice is basically do, do that.
Okay. You want me to write a blurb?
So we could, what's the kind of timeframe are you thinking?
Well, it would have to be for the next news, which comes out.
Which I just saw she had to put that one there.
Right, exactly. So we, we missed it because it's the third. So what would it be? She usually puts it out. I'm like, you know, you have to get it in like the twenty-second or something.
So.
So it's a month. So it means we couldn't appoint anyone for six weeks, but.
We can still put it on the website. We still can put, and they put it something on there.
But if we're gonna, but if we're gonna put something in the news, then we should wait through that cycle, even if.
Well, I agree. When does Parks have their next meeting?
Oh, I haven't heard from them recently.
Cause here's the other thing.
We can ask them.
We asked them to weigh in. They don't have the final say, but we asked them to weigh in, like when there's a vacancy at the library door.
Right.
That's Tom and Lori's.
Okay.
Well, and also Tom and I have been kind of looking for people for a couple of months.
Yeah.
So.
So you, you think if he had someone who was separate, going.
Yes, they, they don't have anything scheduled right now for the.
They, so at their last meeting, they scheduled their next one and I was there and I can't remember.
Didn't post it, but.
I think it was gonna be like July seventeenth.
So it's not emergent and.
It's not a good decision. No, but if we set the deadline at like July eleventh, then maybe they could look at the resumes that during July is.
Right, right, right.
In August.
Right, exactly.
And then drag it on and on and on.
Okay, so why don't I go ahead and write something up and we can put it on the Google group and we can also have it in the Monterey News and we can post it on our website. And then we can put a deadline of say July eleven? Eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I mean, it's not very hard to write up.
It's unrelated to that. I saw Chris at the group, pulled down, the guy, he looked really good. He's doing really well. He's taking physical therapy, trying to get his strength back.
Yeah, I saw him. He came, he came in, given so. Visitation.
Parks Commission, it's called, right?
Yes.
You can find it in different places as Parks Commission or Parks Commission, but if my, I think Parks Commission is available for Parks. In New Marlboro, they have one park, but Cheney Falls Park, so it's on the Cheney Falls Park Commission.
But it's not Parks Recreation.
It's not Parks Recreation. And please don't write that. A lot of people don't. Is it okay if we bump personnel policies down a little bit?
I, that's.
Okay.
Just, just one question on those. We had discussed last time about sending the department heads, the first three for them to review. Did that get done?
I probably didn't, no. Which ones were they?
The ones that were already done.
The ones were already done, the ones you've been passing. Okay, the first three.
Yeah, so just so that, you know, we knew them and.
Do you wanna do that or you want to do it? Cause I don't think I have all the department heads, you know?
You can, you can, I just wanna make sure I have the right.
He was a, he was a, a single bathroom.
The late ones.
The right ones, okay. I will send them to you. I'll give, I'll do it in three bathrooms because otherwise you, you hit the max.
I'll send them.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure that I have.
Thanks for the reminder.
I read through the minutes from last week, the last meeting, I go, oh, I, nothing happened on that.
Oh, your own minutes.
My own.
Ooh, do you wanna be this like more secretary?
Absolutely not. No, I quit being a so, a, a secretary, you know, another group. I take them one at a time.
But you're, you're eight minutes and you're here.
They're just my own, they're not theirs.
You're getting paid, you know?
Just my thoughts on things, you know, you can't read them and, and maybe, you know, watch me either.
But I want you to write it down.
Sorry. Volunteer, it's not called a volunteer form, it's called a what form?
Appointment request application. Well, this is basically the only thing we use it for.
I know.
In theory, people should fill it out if they wanna be on the COMCOM or something, but, um, there's an online thing.
Right, yep.
And we can print it out for people that don't use the internet.
They say staring at me.
I'm trying to think, one, one thing that we do sometimes when we solicit applications and then we get too many is we point people in the direction of another board that could use help. Not in a rude way, but if you're, if you wanna help.
We're so glad you're in this.
So I'm just trying, we could always use the COMCOM and that's a huge commitment, which is hard to sell people on. Is there anything else where we need people?
What, uh, the planning board's full, right?
I think they might be. If Josh Webb accepts the seat.
Yeah, cause there, there's seven on that.
Which I was trying to get some clarity. Do you know if Josh accepted?
I haven't heard.
Okay, he got one vote. Do you know we're supposed to have two alternates on this again?
Oh, he got one. Oh, that's right, he got one vote. Oh, that's right.
So I don't know if he is gonna accept it. So if Josh doesn't accept that planning board seat, we also need a planning board member and then we should post them simultaneously.
Yeah, I can't, I think all the rest, the other boards are.
They're all, the elected ones are full.
Yeah.
But, long, long break to get too many to say, would you be interested in being on the COMCOM?
Council on Agent. Community Center. They're full.
They're pretty big.
They're all full.
They're pretty big.
So moving on, we have the fire company capital improvement invoices.
I just, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you sent out this one?
Yeah, for rain, for the.
Yeah, that was the one I saw.
Yeah, okay, I got a couple of points I wanna make. The invoice date was nine nineteen twenty-two. The select board wouldn't have approved that. And according to the capital investments is that they are supposed to give us approval before they go make the purchase. So, I, I would like to know, you know, what's the story behind it? Because now I think we get into issues, what does the fire company pay for? What's its role and what is the town's role? What's its role and what is the town's role? Cause it's $5,500 in chairs and furniture up there. I don't ever remember talking about chairs and furniture. I remember talking about renovation in the basement and stuff like that. So I think, as they would say, Houston, we got a problem.
Yeah. I thought that he did talk about replacing the beds.
The beds, but this is furniture. It's those chairs that have been up there for a good while. You know, this is, this, you know, this is what transparency ain't there.
Right. How can you tell what this is for?
This is, it's the chairs. There goes.
Cocktail table and tables.
Table, cocktails and tables, you know, they got the five chairs.
Doesn't H, H D R S.
It's reclining with power.
Yeah.
Oh, we're having a power high breast. I get to.
Okay, so with this is not, you know, I, I'm gonna push. They're gonna hear a lot of notes until we define what the fire company pays for and what the uh, government, uh, we pay for. Cause we're spending people's money that's not ours. They're not mattresses. This is, this is zero transparency.
Okay.
So maybe Susan, if you wanna get them in here, we can have a day meeting and meet with them. But I'm not, you know. You know, it's disappointing to see.
Yeah.
Come out of the box and we got this sitting on our table. So anyway, I'll get off my horse now.
No, but I see your point. So we need to have a conversation.
Well, and, and we gotta define this whole fire company. What its, its role is. Do you have anything, Nikki? I'm not the chair, but I'll give you the mission.
I think, I think I want to head to something. He's just ignoring me at school. It's okay.
I mean, you know what? If you had said you would take the notes, he wouldn't have ignored you. He just raised your note, didn't he?
I'm tied right. I mean, I'm on the fire company and I'll think that this impacts me financially, but you know, I won't, I, I don't want anyone to think that I'm acting any different because I'm on the fire company.
But you're just. Uh, it, that is one of the things that I have voiced as I'm, you know, very disturbed by. They have this nonprofit, which I don't know what they do with the money and and here the town is having to pay for, town did not pay for one chair in the library. And we have chairs and tables. We don't have, I'm sorry, we don't have lumber ones and heated seats and what is that? Whatever else they're doing to them. Uh, but we have chairs that everybody can sit on. And uh, and they're open to the public and that they use for public things, but it's not anything that was paid for by the town. We've never put things like that and it shouldn't be. These are, cause that's like very personal.
How did the library pay for all the chairs?
Uh, but you should.
Pardon? How did the library pay for the chairs?
We have a nonprofit and our nonprofit does those things. And that's what the fire company nonprofit should be doing. They should be raising the money however they wanna raise the money. I don't care. We don't make money on any event that's there, so we can't charge for anything. But they can.
I presume.
Yeah. But on uh, so, so we're paying, uh, we're leasing the, the, the villa. Is, isn't that part of them supplying stuff for the, for the villa themselves or?
I think this is the gray area for.
I mean, I, but it's because it used to be, I'd say around 16,000 years ago, I think, and then he upped it to 60,000.
It's up to $60,000 a year.
So what's, what part of that 60,000 do they use for the, the building?
Well, it was supposed to be for different improvements, okay? In the way the lease contract was written, that there was $90,000 in warrants, but we would have to approve what the work was, okay? So for example, they improved, they repaired the front apron when drive, we approved that, okay? So that comes off of it. They actually asked us to, if you'd been in the building, the first, the basement, it was never completed in its renovation. It's framed, it's got the, you know, so we approved them finishing that, had them a little small space for a workout area, storage space and stuff like this. Those chairs have been in their building for a while, cause I did the lease negotiations and we'd go in there. That was never mentioned as 5500, 5400 dollar item. So you know, I, you know, from my point of view, the, the invoice is rejected. That's, you know, we're paying 60,000, you know, a year and uh, you know.
I can see the town paying here if they need new, like new hoses or something like that.
We, that's a separate tackle, but we just set aside, the, the floor in the uh, in the bay is in terrible shape. It's got uh, the heating in the floor and a couple of things are stop working and stuff like that. The uh, east side of the building needs paint and things like that. We knew, we gave them, we did approve money. I don't know, up to around 20, 25,000 dollars for finishing the kitchen, which they did. They told us this is what we got and so forth, but the chairs were never, you know.
I was, I was learning what, which, I mean, I know the town allows them money, but like for, for certain repairs on the fire apparatus though. I didn't, but the building I thought would be under their, their control, uh, their rental bond money, not the town paying.
Well, they.
Not for that.
Exactly. It's, it's a mess because there was a couple of years where someone had a bad idea and it was carried on for a few years where the town approved $30,000 of money for capital improvements, but it wasn't specified. And it wasn't even spent for a few years, so it just built up.
And we just spent the first amount last fall. We had that 90,000.
It, we're kind of dealing with uh, old.
Old and new.
Old.
Yeah, no, I thought it was.
It is, but now, you know, it's really, we're going to a paid system. You know, we're going to have paid fire department. And my argument is you can't have a separate rule for the fire department and what you do for D V W or the police. You know, the police force wouldn't go out and spend $5,400 without us knowing it and then drop the receipt on our desk.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, I, I caution, my caution, I agree that we have to do, go to pay the fire department, but we can't have two separate rules, one for the fire department and one for everybody else.
So far, the other receipts have all been appropriate, so obviously we just haven't had a conversation about them.
So Roger, can you?
Yeah, but I think.
Yeah, those concerns to the fire company.
And they, but we need to really start having a conversation about the fire company's role and the fire department's role. Because if it's not clear, I'm gonna vote no.
All right. Roger's gonna get really concerned about this invoice to the fire company and Frank's questioning a conversation about the relationship between the town and the fire company. Moving on, the draft annual appointment list I have basically drafted, but I didn't send out. I'm still working on, if anyone feels strongly about wanting to see it, you're more than welcome to. I can.
Do you need help with anything?
Well, I can tell you what I have. I mean, I have all the individual positions, the accountant, the treasurer, et cetera, town council.
That remind me, the treasurer, were you gonna have a conversation with the treasurer though?
We were.
Long, long time ago. I can barely remember.
You're showing your age.
We, we were.
I think she had that issue with a family member with the accident, which kind of.
And it's like, I mean, it's like, look, it goes back years. I don't always have a great relationship with them. They mostly do the job usually. Um, sometimes I think we need to put a little bit more, light a fire under them a little bit more. But at the end of the day, we've been through some difficult things with payroll, like really difficult. We got in over our heads with that payroll system. And they mostly helped us dig us out of it. That was accounted for a lot of work that they did. They had some bad feelings because they felt like they did more work than they bargained for with that system. When it was proposed to me when I was on the board, it was proposed, as I recall, as a recommendation of the treasurer. Apparently now it was, they don't. It wasn't a recommendation of the treasurer necessarily. It didn't make their lives easier in hindsight. It also is the kind of thing where once you go through it and you transition to a online time and attendance system, it pays off in the end, once you figure out the case.
But the transition itself.
We went through a couple of years where there was issue after issue after issue in different departments. Um, we need to get O P A B kind of nailed down. That money generates a little bit of interest. It should probably be generating a lot more. If we put it in right now where the market's gone down.
It's generating around $500 a month in interest.
But we're looking at 250,000.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not very good, right?
So.
No.
Six thousand bucks over, the, six thousand dollars over the year.
That's. 2500 would be 1%, right? 500 dollars a month is six grand a year. It could probably do more. And at the same time, one of the things that will happen when we really invest is it gonna be more volatile? And Sarah was upfront about that, so.
Yeah, but I mean, you can drive down, get US savings bonds for six months. That's over 4.5%.
I, I, but I don't know. We'd have to ask if there's regulations about O P A B, what it can invest in.
Well, I'm sure there is, but if you can't invest in the federal government, then you're really kinda screwed.
Well.
It's actually good to invest in the bonds or.
They are right now, but it depends the, the beautiful budget or what you heard with the bond markets about that.
All that said, I don't know where other people's heads are at, but I feel like we'll stick with it. Sometimes we gotta light a fire under them. Sometimes we need to be a little bit more self-sufficient. Well, that whole time we chased after them about debt paydowns, yes, we should have gotten an answer and also we could have found it in other ways. So that's not great, but it's not worth to me doing anything different. And also she hasn't pushed to do anything different recently. During our last contract negotiation a year ago, we both, I think, felt like we were at the end of our ropes, but this year was a lot quieter.
Yeah, I think, I think we've uh, we've done a lot of work on the time and attendance, figure it out. And I'll, I'll, I just made a note, I'll, I'll ask her if they're feeling the same struggles that they did last year because I know that you know, every two weeks I'm spending myself personally and spending about four, four hours or so on Monday mornings to kind of go through everything, just to make sure it's all set.
You're saying four hours. So here's where.
I believe it, that's.
Are you timing a lot of mistakes or?
It's, it's, you know, it's one of these things where I, I'm not really finding a lot of errors, but I try to go through and find things that are.
Don't look right.
That don't look right and then.
That's good.
So you know, it's just, I just take my time.
Here's what I think though, Roger. It's great that you review it. You got, you have to review it. Also.
It's also two weeks. Remember it's two weeks worth of time.
It's two weeks or a couple of days. But I think department heads need to be, that responsibility needs to be delegated, the responsibility of department heads, because they are directly overseen with people. I think in the past, some of the quirks of the system were such that department heads felt like, I don't even know what to do. Like we would just get frustrated emails like, I know what's messed up. I don't know what to do. And you're kind of the contact point with the treasurer. But I think it should be explained to department heads in as clear a way as possible that when you are signing off on this, you, it is a payroll, but time and attendance is a big deal.
I think that does happen because I, I um, I'm actually doing what Jim used to do. So Jim used to, and Jim's not here.
Yeah.
So I kind of, I do what he does. Uh, Brian and Sean finalize all their stuff. Um, and um, I know like Don Clausen does all his people, um, Mark uh, make this his people. So it's just a stragglers of people. It's, it's really just like, I try to go down line by line, just make sure, cause we all make mistakes. I make mistakes all the time. And I try to just go line by line. And it's two weeks. And so it's, you know, three or four hours on a Monday. But I think what that's done is that has, that has helped alleviate some of those problems that they were having last year. And so then I just send things off to Lisa and where we used to, Lisa Ward, Lisa Bailey from Mass Community Fund. And our back and forths are really short now, like, like one or two emails and it's all done. And she's.
We've worked out some of the cases.
We definitely worked out the cases.
I also think that's too much for you to say three or four hours.
Yeah, but you're right. It's gotta get down to the department heads. And you know, you have, you have to do that. And the question is how do you get it set up? You're gonna have to spend time getting it right. But the financial part becomes the department heads. Cause they know the contractors and all this other stuff and they should be doing the follow-up. And it's gotta be, you know, I, I don't, I don't see, you know, when I think of, you know, Brian, Sean can be taught that, or you may wanna delegate it to Chris or whatever, that's fine. But they have to be the keeper of it and they gotta learn, they're spending someone else's money, so you gotta keep after. So the question is how do we get to that point and how do we explain the expectations? And then it gets handed off. You should, you know, it's like doing the invoice.
I think one problem is, is I agree, because that's a little bit like, yeah, there's a, a little.
But you know what to look for, cause you got the year of 15 months experience. It's like doing invoices for why you really learn what the process is. God, it's a terrible process. It's a god.
Well, I think here's the thing. With the highway, that, that's just a tough one, right, that we're in. But with the others, if you find an issue, that's not, that's an email to Lisa Bradley to fix it. But it's also an email to the department head saying, found this issue, here's what we gotta do, so this doesn't happen again. And then you still look, but hopefully they're taking care of it before you ever see. Cause I remember one time we paid the transfer station attendant for like 70 hours, cause he accidentally, I clocked in at like 3:00 PM and clocked out the following day at 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
So.
I can't wait to work one, one week in the chair.
No, we left right after that.
I mean.
Um, but all that said, there's gonna be, right, identity, there's gonna be issues, but I think the more and more you can delegate.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to take some of that, you know, with, and even I have an assistant doing some of that stuff. Cause it is, it is just looking at numbers and making sure that where, you know, the, the numbers make sense, that it, everything worked right. I try to go down through and, and check it. It's really just checking that all the dollars are correct and all that. But we've done pretty good over the past year.
Having talked today about issues with the, what should I call it, sick bank and vacation bank of some employees. Uh, what do you think? That's gonna take the tax and is it gonna be on you or on Sarah?
Uh, it's gonna start on me. Yeah, that was my plan for July, was to start working with the new fiscal year and just kind of look at that and and kind of go through. And what Susan's talking about is issues with, with accruals, vacation and sick time. There's a lot of inconsistencies. Some people who have them, some people don't. Mostly part timers are kind of struggling, but there's, that have them. I just have to go through and look. It doesn't feel consistent.
But it's also an issue with.
With, with some part, some full-time, you know, full-time person, so we gotta take care of as well. So, but I think that's just, things weren't put together right at the, at the time when people started and everything, so I have to go back through.
But this is what I'm not 100% sure. I mean, I know the town administrator plays a role in benefits administration, but in the treasurer contract, one of the duties is pay over in account for salaries and wages, including payroll deductions, maintain payroll and personnel records. When so appointed, administer unemployment compensation programs, ensure compliance with labor industry, retirement insurance laws and moderate compliance with personnel bylaws, union contracts and civil surveillance regulations. So all that said, I think it's a shared responsibility. When we hire someone, you tell Sarah. This is the rate that, you know, they're full-time employees, so they aren't in this rate. But to some degree, I feel like the town administrator dating back to before you has carried a lot of the weight. Cause this is something I discussed with the previous town administrator. Uh, carried a lot of the weight of the treasurer.
I, I don't, I, I don't disagree with you on both the treasurer and the town accountant. I think there are, there are things that, but I think some of it has to do with that we are, for whatever purposes decided, we outsourced the treasurer and the accountant, whatever those decisions were. So you sort of lose some of that administrative kind of work you might find in the office. And I, I see that actually is some of that administrative stuff, just simple stuff. Like, you know, mistakes happen. Like for example, on the accountant's side, sometimes the, uh, on occasions, you have the um, a vendor ID. Every so often, not very often anymore, the, the description of the vendor ID of the vendor is the correct vendor, but it's a wrong vendor ID. So, and you're like looking at it really quick and it might have been off by one as you were looking at the thing. And there's no, like they're not reviewing it.
But here's what I'll, like, sometimes I've seen, catch things on the wire. And it's like, who was asleep? Because it's not rare for someone, one person makes a mistake, but that's the whole point. We now have checks and balances reviewed. Now we have two, it's not. We now have checks and balances reviewed, now we have two, it's not, one person made a mistake happens, but when the accountant is supposed to take those in and verify whether they're accurate, money being spent correctly, and all of a sudden, you have a wages account paying what's clearly a vendor, which we've seen recently. Who's not paying?
Some of the, you know, doing the invoices, some of the companies had two numbers.
Yeah, that's right, I'm trying to deal with that too.
Yeah, trying to get it cleared up, and then I would have to go back to the history to find out what, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like those little checks and balances to your point, like I've seen that happen too, where, where, um, the, the account number, we, we've put the account, the correct account number in, right, so there, I, I don't know where that, and.
Where did it go wrong?
It went, it went wrong, because it's in the wrong account, it's in the wrong account.
But, wait, so when we, you and other departments submit, submit vendor words, the accountants process them, and then the treasurer comes in and prints out the check.
Yes.
So by the time we're seeing the work, the departments have approved them, the accountant has approved them, and the treasurer has approved them. And we get these crazy problems.
So the question is, how does it get through all those people?
And it's not a one-off, we all know it's not a one-off.
No, it happens, you know, every, every, every couple, you know, if you really go down and look to it, it probably happens every couple of, you know, once a month.
It, but it, and it, they can usually be corrected, and are, and we went through a whole list of things to be corrected. But I just wonder, you have to think, if Steve Bowlen or someone was a come in town hall, they would say, why are you paying, you know, the, why are you paying the town administrator's salary out of grant writing expenses for something?
Well, that's where, that's where it happens.
We paid grant writer, we paid a grant writer out of Board of Selectment's statements.
And the reason, but the, but, but the rea, the reason, the reason why, the, the reason why is that the account numbers are exactly the same, except for the last digit. So, it's like, it's like, it's like.
Account numbers are what, sixteen numbers?
I know, that's ridiculous, right? It went through three people, that's not a problem, it's not, problems, mistakes happen, but it went through then the accountant and the treasurer, then it showed up on our desk. And it's like, are they paying attention? So all that said, it doesn't mean, all this talk doesn't mean anything, are we gonna just, are we gonna reappoint them? And if so, I mean, we've had conversations.
Yeah, but I'd be curious, I mean, that kind of software for like doing the invoices is, you know, because you just take your department heads and they would only have the list of, uh, numbers they use. You know, it, it seems to me that it's.
Do you think that would reduce?
Do, 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 yeah, reduce the error. Yeah, you would think the accountant would think about, how can we get this through the system easier and quicker? But it's a manually Excel system, but I don't know.
It's not just easier and quicker, it's easier and quicker with fewer errors.
Fewer errors, but you also can print up, what did I spend on this vendor this year, you know, there's all kinds of different data you could get.
Is it hard to, um, get a new vendor list as they're updated?
No, no, it's not hard.
Are, are they accessible to every department?
Um, that's, that's the one thing I still have to figure out, how people get them, because it, it used to be they would get loaded up on the town's website, but I.
Well, I wonder if they're gonna be, there's this weird part of the town website that you can log in if you're staff, I have a login.
Yeah.
You can see certain things, I don't think we really use it.
No, I don't think people use it much anymore.
Um, that said, maybe there could be a link to a living document vendor list, and everyone could access it, when there were changes, a new vendor to add, or we realized there's a redundancy, it could be reported to you, go to the accountant, and then they could update it, but then people probably don't have an up-to-date under.
And it would be read-only.
It'd be read-only, but then also they could say, identify problems, and then they could be fixed, and they could see the difference.
I'll have to look at that, because I rarely log into that staff, I, I don't know where.
I don't really think anyone uses.
Because someone told me that, somebody was like, did you upload it to the town's website, and I like uploaded, and it took me a little while to figure that out, I couldn't even find where it got uploaded.
I'd be very curious to know how many people log in to that. It's a weird setup, because everyone logs into the same account.
Yeah.
That's you're asking for trouble.
You are asking for trouble with that.
Everybody should have.
Yeah, we could, we can get.
That's a nice violation.
Yeah.
Well, you have no authority on that account.
Yeah, that's, so, to sign on, it'd be a group sign-on.
Okay, all that said, does anyone feel strongly?
No, I, I think we brought, I mean, some will work on down, you know, we know what we have, we know the positive, we know the areas we have to watch, so. I don't think it's something we should try to change right now.
Yeah.
Well, how did this come up?
You asked about the contract.
I asked about the contract, and but how, why did I ask about the contract?
Because it was, it was just a dead list, and then there was some other fee for emergency.
Okay, right, so basically, it looks like they're not having a contract discussion because the contract's okay? Wait, did she didn't, wasn't asking for an increase, she wasn't?
Well, we did a three percent standard, so, that is, um, police chief contract is one of our contracts and stuff, I believe there are others that align with the fiscal year.
Do we have landscaping contracts somewhere?
No, and those.
We had three years.
There were three years.
Yeah, but we did that when I was on the finance.
We did, we did, we did one for gravel, and I have to do another one for every equipment, I was hoping that Laura could help me with that, and she did, she gave me some documentation that I have to do.
Well, she only has, what, another three weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She hasn't been around, she's been dealing with some personal issues.
How's the interview going?
Good, good, she's distracted by the summer.
Really good, great, why are we sitting in here?
I know, because this town makes perfect, it's not too hot out.
She's doing a great job, she's a great, she's a great first person to greet people and all that, she knows a lot of people, and she's, she's got a really good positive. Positive attitude, and she, she's actually been doing a lot, right now, um, she's been trying to keep up with the transfer stations, so she's doing some of that work from home, because she can log in to the, um, she has a login to the transfer station, um, portal management piece of that, so she's adding, uh, you know, she's adding the people, doing the meetings and sending them, sending them out, so.
Um, just getting back to the appointment, I'll just read, and then if you have thoughts or ideas, oh, I remembered we're gonna do this or that. We have the building department, talked to Donald over about that, need to finalize the exact appointments, Lake Garfield Working Group, Memorial Day Parade Committee, Grant, do you still wanna be on that?
I'll be on for one, yeah.
Um, hoping to find someone from Hume, because we lost our other Hume contractor, and they do the PA system and the hot dogs and have a flow, so it's useful to have.
We did that specifically this year?
Yeah. They had two trucks, and they did the hot dogs, and they brought the PA system.
Yeah, that's good.
Community Center Committee, Renewable Energy Working Group, Election Workers and Board of Registars, I believe Catherine's up, I have an email out to Amanda. Counts on Aging, we have a couple of Renewables, Historical Commission and Cultural Council, that's the whole list.
We have to do, um, uh, just because you said, what about Kyle Pierce with the Lake Fuel Room? Is that?
Yeah, that's a good question, I gotta.
Just, I just reminded.
When, when you said something, I forget what you said, you just kind of reminded me of that. So. With the Lake Fuel Tax District, and we gotta do like BRPA and VRPC and, um, with the Lake Fuel Tax District, they brought this to our attention, months ago, Monterey's supposed to have a repres, representation on the tax district, Kyle's been doing it for many years, she hasn't been formally appointed in many years. I was trying to figure out with Mark, because there's other towns and, or there's one other town, but there's a lot of other members.
You said.
The Board of the Lake Fuel Tax District.
You said, I was trying to figure out with Mark, and I was asking.
Mark Dampst.
Mark Dampst.
And we were trying to figure out what would stagger Monterey, and then I got hung up and it got put on the shelf. So now was the perfect time to take off the shelf, and just get off and figure it out. I don't know, but Kyle.
She's been doing, she's, she's, she says she's been doing it for like seven, eight years, and she got appointed a long time ago, and never met.
And maybe it was a, maybe we just had to appoint her, and she's on until whatever like onset and come across, but, um, that's a good point.
It's funny, till cause means to me until they do something and get them fired, but I don't, I think it's until like, you know, there's a change of state, they need to leave or, you know, life or whatever, I don't know, it's just funny.
Um, that's a point.
Okay.
Um.
Can you just talk to our old dancers?
There are none right now, I'm putting some stuff together, and I am hoping that maybe next week.
Are we gonna meet next week or two weeks?
It's up to you guys, but I'll figure it out.
I'd like to meet next week.
Because.
No, I'd like to meet next week.
I'd like to.
You would like to.
Yeah, because I go away to file, and I come back, I'm on Tuesday.
So, I, I, it's up to you, because I could, uh, because.
When are you going?
I don't know.
Because the majority of the, the majority of the first round of, uh, of transfers will be from the, uh, Reserve Fund. I think that's where they're gonna come from, so that, that doesn't require you guys.
Yeah, so basically, Roger and I had a little discussion, you can transfer between different accounts. We haven't dipped into the Reserve Fund at all this year, so we can also just dip into the Reserve Fund to start, and that's just the Finance Committee agreeing on it, and you don't need to find where money may have been given.
Right, right.
So I think we're just gonna start with that, that's simple.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, I agree.
Um.
And Steve was chair of the Finance Committee?
I don't, I don't know, they haven't, as far as I know, they haven't been yet, yeah.
So it's Roger, Steve and Jeff?
I did see Roger yesterday, yeah, yesterday he stopped in, uh, he was looking to get appointed, but, um, Amanda wasn't here, and I sent him the email for the conflict of interest with State's website for that.
So for Memorial Day, I got Jeff and Roger to do the reefs.
Oh, nice.
Steve told me that he took my place.
It was a beautiful, I guess, funeral was, I guess it wasn't funeral, was that memorial service by the temple? That guy, he was amazing, he was like, at one point he was called provost, but he was basically served a ton of things, and he was there for like almost forty years. It was, it was at one of the theaters in the Daniel, and it was like, even the balcony was packed. Like, people came from all over for this, like, and by all over, I mean from other countries.
Wow.
Like, he impacted so many people's lives, it was.
Wow.
Uh, no, bowing, bowing. Um, but yeah, really an amazing guy, he was a very cool guy, I really liked him, anyway, sorry, just made me think of it.
Um, so.
I don't think we nearly, how many people would like people, oh my god. An SRO memorial service, standing remotely.
Um, so, yeah, I guess we should talk meeting schedule a little bit, not the best time, but it kind of works. Susan, are you all clear for June?
Just checking, as far as I know, we're not going anywhere, so yes, Frank.
The problem, the problem.
Geez, some people get to do a lot of traveling. You're not going anywhere in there, you're.
Okay.
You're not gonna go anywhere.
But I may not be at these meetings.
Yeah, that's true.
Well.
So I wanna be sure that you both are available.
Right.
Well, it's preferably, shit, I wouldn't be out every Tuesday.
So get out, boy.
I don't mind Wednesdays too, I don't know about you, Susan, and I don't like switching out too, too much, but Wednesdays are really good.
Well, do you wanna do?
We used to do Wednesdays, oh, that's right, he had the dinner.
Yeah. I'm cheering that too.
I, I kinda, I, I sort of don't care which one, but I prefer ten to sixteen.
Exactly, yeah.
Let's stick with Tuesday.
Yeah. I do like, but he was saying something about Tuesdays.
Well, I can do next week.
And then what about the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth and July first?
Okay, uh.
I, you know what, I will say this, I think it's really good to have a, a meeting right around the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
It's probably better, Finance Committee has a meeting right around the end of the fiscal year.
So, they are, you would say like the twenty-fourth then?
Yeah.
So we're good, we're good for, we're good for transfers up until fifteenth of July.
Well, so here's the other thing, Roger, so our consultants who do all the work prefer that the very last one come in on the fifteenth. I will say, we should tell our departments, it needs to be, this one should be on the fifteenth. So I will say, if they come in later and they're really important, we should pressure them to be done anyway. Because it's a lot easier than cleaning it up between fiscal years.
Yeah, it is.
And so, like, in the last couple of years, we'll often have, like, all the mowing, for the cemetery, it comes in, like, at a certain point.
What you said.
I would say if it comes in, like, June nineteenth, we expedite it, in my opinion.
I, 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 I agree, and I'm trying to, so I'm trying, especially with the, the mowers.
Are you talking about June fifteenth, not July fifteenth?
June.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait, and then we can do encumbrances through July.
You can do encumbrances actually through August.
Through August.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're okay, I think, I think about, I think we're, okay.
So which two states don't work for you?
Well, well, how about, okay, okay, the tenth works, um.
Yeah, what about the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth?
The seventeenth I'll make work, and the twenty-fourth I'll dial in.
Okay, so you can be here on the.
Well, we don't need all those touches.
No, no, the question is, what?
Make work the seventeenth or work?
I, I, I'll make it work, I just gotta leave DC earlier or something, back by three in the afternoon.
We, we also don't, I mean, it's summer, we're not pressured to wait all the time.
The question is.
I don't love waiting next week, because it doesn't really.
I, I, I think, if, if you want, you could do two weeks, I mean, I, that, I think that's okay.
Well, then let's do the seventeenth, I'll make sure I'm here.
Yeah, if, if your concern is about, um, the, the transfers and all that, I think waiting the two weeks is, is good.
I don't even think we need to be concerned, it sounds like they're mostly gonna be reserved.
There's gonna be a lot of reserves.
So that's not even, the, Roger made an application to Finance, but I mean, we're not really involved.
There may be, there may be a handful, as far as I can tell right now, there, I, I have to go through and look, there may be a handful that, um, may require entry department.
Something sad.
Like recall, yeah, required, you know, the, the, well, actually, that's done pretty well.
Okay.
We ended up with seven thousand dollars to go over.
Oh, I mean, you're transferring how the salt is saying into something else.
Oh, oh, yes, 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 yeah.
You only end up.
Only that, that's like, that's nothing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Holy crap, that's scary.
So are we in agreement for seventeen?
I'm, I'm fine with the seventeenth, and if you wanted to make it the eighteenth, I'd still be okay.
Seventeenth will work, I guess, I gotta leave, I don't really know.
But not next week, right?
Well, that's different.
I got some of it.
Okay, well, what if we just do the twenty-fourth?
You wanna do the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth?
I'd rather do the seventeenth.
Oh, that's right, the twenty-fourth, yeah, we dialed it.
Because I'm supposed to be, I answered the problem.
So the seventeenth gives us the option, the twenty-fourth makes it harder, because we wouldn't be here to sign something if we needed to.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll do June seventeenth.
Okay.
And you can leave earlier, because you don't have to meet the next week.
I'm like, oh, that's, Joe Pride.
And what are we doing with the twenty-fourth? Not.
Not, well, well, call, well, I answered that question on the seventeenth.
Every two weeks is.
Everybody's in the summer.
Yeah.
Su, Susan, you and I may need to have a meeting about what do we need to do with the fire department, because there's so many, um, you know, we have a lot of ideas.
And well, there's gonna be, I mean, let's face it, there's gonna be, there's so much stuff coming up with that, right? There's gonna be, we need to have policies on a bunch of stuff.
I know, we should sit down and make a list.
And when we get to the employee policies or personnel policies, tonight, one of the things I wanna raise is how we wanna handle departmental policies, because it's not just the fire department, we have some highway department policies that are highway department policies, we have some police department policies that are police department policies. So we just have to decide on what, how we wanna approach that, and how we wanna let people know that some departments have separate policies, because if they're all separate policies, I mean, we talked about it today with Roger, like, do we actually have them all just alphabetic? Should they be in some other kind of order?
So I think, I think if departments are gonna have separate policies, which they are, it's just one document, so like, extra police department policies.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And.
Higher department, higher.
Right, and so that makes it less complicated.
I agree.
And they could still be alphabetical, you get hired as a police officer, we say, here's all the personnel policies, here's the ones you need to like sign, because they're the ones that get in town too, and then here's the police department policies.
Right, yeah, okay. It's just, as usual.
We need to mention it onboarding like checklist.
We do.
Mm-hmm.
And I have to admit that as a, as a person, if I were unemployed, I would find having a list alphabetically extremely awkward, because I really, maybe this is just the way my brain works, but there are some policies that might be named something that I wouldn't think to look for in the under. So vacation and sick leave are two obvious ones, what are all the benefits ones are now listed, a lot of them are listed all separately. And I see the point of doing that, and it does allow you to change things without having to change a whole document. But the flip side of that is, it's not user-friendly for the. It's not user-friendly for the, for the employee, it's user-friendly for us.
Well, if we weren't, I don't think it really negates any of the work that we've done in any real way to put them all in one document.
I I don't think it.
So it's two, you could do it either way.
I I'd say I'm just saying.
I would do it in one way, that way you have one document, and then when you modify it, you have to put the date on it that you modified it. You don't have to worry about inserting it into something else, it's one document with the date at the top, cause it's done.
Right, and just that, but if we do that, we also have to have an index or.
Okay, so.
Well, you have to have, yes, you have to have an index, but I.
Fair.
You know, but I think it's more work upfront, but you don't get confused, well, you know, did I give this person the most recent policy? Did my fire department change, cause I'm sure we don't know what we don't know about how the fire department look.
No.
So, just to rattle off on dates, our next meeting is June seventeenth, we're not planning anything beyond that or before that, as needed, obviously, as always.
Okay.
Um, we'll move on to personnel policies, that that other old business, I don't think we're.
Okay. So the, I I'd like to deal with the ones that I think are some of the most important ones first.
Yeah, we're on policies.
Yeah, so the one titled paid time off.
Yes.
Um, so basically on a previous conversation, oh, I, let me send you this new this person, because something got changed when I met with Roger today. Why is everything similar? It is a lot of place.
So car- carryover, well, I don't, I'll I'll wait for you. There, now I got it. Um. Carryover. Paid time off?
Mm-hmm.
For full-time employees, it says it must be used in the year, which is credited unless there's prior approval. I think that we should just set a limit, because we're always gonna approve four days. So what if we just say five days or ten days can be carried over?
I think it should, it should be hours, I think it should also be consistent with the part-time employees, because on the part-time employees, you basically say that. They can carry, they can carry forty hours of earned paid time off can be carried over to the following calendar year, simply without question.
Right.
But as a full-time employee, you have to ask permission, unless you unless you do what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think the only tricky part is then, we have to be clear, cause the, we. Let's try this again, part-time employees are getting paid time off, but we're not, we're not making it sick or.
Right, correct.
Vacation, right, whereas full-time employees get separated.
Mm-hmm.
Sick and vacation, so um, sick leave does accrue up to ninety days.
Correct.
For full-time employees, so, um, and we have to make sure that we remember that. That's a liability against the town when they carry it over, it's never been a problem, and I think if they're carrying over. X number of hours, maybe it isn't, but we have to figure out if we have to include the possibility of that in the budget when we do it.
We don't, I don't.
Yeah, I I mean, I.
Because ironically, in in my years, you get a lot more money back from unfilled positions and time between turnovers, at the end of the day.
Okay.
I mean, if you, if you zero in on one account, it might not be that rare, I mean, it's only happened once since I've been here, that you actually run out of money in an account, because. You pay someone's vacation out and hire the next person.
Right.
But, we've had tens of thousands of dollars basically every year from unfilled positions or gaps between, so the bottom line. Even though we don't really budget the bottom line, in some ways we do, the bottom line is always met.
Okay, so what are we thinking, you suggested five days, you said do it in hours.
Or two weeks.
I I would do forty hours.
Forty hours.
I I think if you start doing large amounts and you get two or three people to do it, you're gonna put a burden on the department, so that's the worst case scenario, so I. Two is I think they should manage their time in that year frame, you know, that year, so I would, I would limit it to forty hours.
Yeah, forty hours is good, and I think it's good to be consistent about hours versus days or weeks, yeah.
Yeah, I I think.
I think hours are better.
Uh, cause you could think, maybe they may, you know, they got given treatment for something, they need to leave their work three hours a day.
Or they wanna come back late from a vacation, or sorry, early on vacation.
Yeah, I I would do hours.
Up to forty hours of earned pay, earned vacation time maybe carried over to the following calendar calendar year, is that?
Yeah, that sounds good, that's good.
Following fiscal, we have calendar year in part-time employees.
I think it should be fiscal.
Fiscal, I'm gonna change that right now.
Fiscal.
It's under.
Oh, yeah, calendar year, it should be fiscal year.
And time will be accrued on a bi-weekly basis?
Hang on, okay, let me fix this before you give me any new wording.
I think it actually, well.
When I, when I get my paid time off at my job, every time I submit a time in attendance for my bi-weekly payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
That's when it adds the paid time off.
Yeah, every time, yeah.
Like every two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, so it it do, it would accrue, it would accrue, but by pay period.
How does it work in per person?
Same same way, you you get, you get.
Per pay period.
Per per pay period, yeah.
So time will be accrued on a bi-weekly basis? Is that what you're saying?
Bi-weekly, you mean twice a week or every two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a reason not to make it monthly?
Payroll, because it's just not how the system.
Because the system doesn't.
I think the system, I think the system, I I can double check.
So. Uh. Time will be accrued on a.
I'm pretty cer- I'm pretty certain.
On a what, on a payroll?
On on a.
You could also say.
Uh, on a pay period basis?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so as you notice, um, I, there had been, it came to our attention today. That there in past years had been problems with the interpretation of the way the years of service piece was interpreted. That some people were historically denied any vacation because of the way that thing read.
Yeah.
And I had an issue with, she had suggested we do like zero to three years, and I'm like, zero to three years, that's. From a mathematician standpoint, that's actually four years, it's year zero, year one, year two, and year three, so we changed the wording. We did some little research and changed the wording using um Needham's contract. To make years of service less than three years, three to eight years, and over eight years, is how it brings, do you wanna see?
Sounds good to me.
Cause I know.
Sounds good to me, I I I understand what you're saying.
Should we get rid of weeks entirely and just make it all hours?
I think it should be on some.
I think you're right, it should be hours.
Okay, just say eighty hours?
Yeah.
Cause as soon as someone works a thirty-five hour week, that just.
Right.
I have some, you, some of my people work thirty-five hours, some thirty-five, some work four.
And I I did get a question today, which I totally understand about, um, especially with the fire department position getting put out there, that it's ninety-six hours of vacation. Why that choice, so in case you get it, do you need to go over why that choice was made?
Yeah, if you're familiar with it.
Yeah, if you're familiar with it, and.
Correct, we're familiar.
Um, basically just because they, because of the way that tour works, that it's a forty-eight hour tour.
Uh-huh.
It, a forty, giving somebody only forty hours would mean you wouldn't even have a full tour off.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and they have sixty-one tours in a year, and they're working over twenty-six hundred hours instead of two thousand hours.
Right, twenty days.
Right, so that's, it's more than twenty-five percent more hours. And I I just felt the original eighty hours was two work weeks, because it's two forty-hour work weeks. So what I went was trying to get the equivalent of two weeks of vacation, which is essentially two tours, and each tour is a forty-eight hour tour, so that's ninety-six hours. It it's, it was as close to what I thought was equitable to the two weeks off that I could come up with.
And if you think about it as a week's vacation, the, the, they have four days, four days off, and then two days on, and four days off. So if they take that two weeks, there's ten days, which, that's basically what you get in the vacation, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, right, right.
It's essentially what you're getting, when you take a week's vacation, it's pretty, it's pretty close, it's like nine days versus ten hours, so it's it kind of e- equals out in that way.
Right.
I mean, and, well, here's the other thing, we have a pretty comprehensive list of holidays. Which doesn't apply necessarily to the police department, but for other full-time employees. Uh, there's a lot of days off built in.
And I think. And I think because of that question about the, you know, the difference between fire and other departments is why. Susan and I were like, we need to make like a sheet for, you know, paid time off for police department, paid time off for.
Well, I I think yes, you gotta do it by the part, that should be.
Cause it it, it just gets, it gets confusing with those other three departments.
And when you, when you have a twenty-four seven service and somebody has to be working on the holidays, you have specific policies for that too, it really starts to get very hanky. Okay, so now we need, time will be accrued on a pay period basis. Up to forty hours earned vacation time can be carried over to the following fiscal year. All requests for vacation time off, in any amount of time estimated right into the town administration with as much advance notice as possible. Maximum amount of vacation time and appointment accumulated by the select tour, question mark?
No, we got rid of that.
No, we got rid of that.
Right, um, because the maximum you can accumulate is as much as you want during the year, and then you can carry, so.
Forty hours. Right.
You could carry over forty and then earn a hundred and sixty, and that would be two hundred, in theory, or if you didn't take any of it, you'd be dropped right back down to forty.
Right.
Right. Right.
It's in a way, it does.
Two hundred.
It encourages people to.
Right.
To to take vacation.
Right, that's right.
We want them to take vacation.
I, that's exactly it, I don't think it's healthy for people to not take vacation, which is part of why I'm always hesitant to say you can't carry it over.
I know, but I think, you know, we're always gonna get the question, and then we're always gonna wanna say yes to a week.
I, no, you're not wrong, you're not wrong, yeah.
Let's put it right. So, just, I, did you have one extra sentence in there? Oh, oh, here's the one question I had, do people, do we want every employee submitting their request for time off in any amount to the town administration?
I do.
Um, our request will be.
I I just would have stepped in and be like, I don't wanna do that, no, I I.
I think realistically, is it's gonna be more appropriate for the department, how do you?
Yes, yes, supervisor.
Well, yeah, but then you, then you get into like with Jim Stone, peak trained on how to do all that stuff, or?
They're not really.
You submit your request to your direct supervisor period, and that might change, you might have a department head, and then he's. Not available, so your direct supervisor becomes the town administrator.
So in writing or not in writing? Just two-year direct.
Sorry, that seems really out to even.
I know, really need to.
Well, it sounds like, it seems really out to even, like, do we have time cards, like we're punching in the, in the thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Two-year director supervisor with as much advance notice as possible.
Yeah, I remember that. I I remember that.
Do we have to, I mean, I hate being annoying here, but do we have to say something like, bear in mind that if the request. Will cause undue hardship to the department, it may to turn down, and lack of advance warning is likely to increase the likelihood of something like that.
Basically. Basically.
There probably should be something like that in there.
I mean, we're probably gonna accrue ninety-nine percent of them, maybe, I I think for the one percent.
Yeah.
High, high, yeah, that, that's a little percent, yeah. Every couple of years or something.
Please.
Cause it snows.
Um. That, what, please recognize that, um, vac- vacation, how do we phrase this? I didn't really think of it till right now, um.
I think that you should ask Collins Center to write that sentence, cause they probably something queued up, you know?
Alright.
Hmm, asked, um. I think that squares my vacation pretty good. It's all in hours, and you can carry over forty hours, and it's actually a reasonable amount of vacation.
Right, okay, and then sick leave.
And then. So I would, I would tend to getting rid of, tend toward getting rid of any reference to days period.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Because people have different life days.
Yes.
Where it says three, you should just put fifteen. Fifteen hours of which may be used annually as personal, as personal time.
Yeah.
Because that's where it's like, oh, I've gotta go to the dentist in the morning, I need to use.
Oh. Comes down to like fifteen hours of which.
Yeah, it says three, three, which is a.
Wait, fifteen hours?
But, but, what's, that's cause it's saying three, I I don't know what that means, it says three, fifteen, fifteen.
Who's three uses thirteen?
It's fifteen sixty per year.
Right.
A quarter, a quarter per month is fifteen sixty, so that can just disappear.
It's fifteen sixty, right.
Yeah.
And you could say you can take twenty-four hours of it as personal, you know, whatever you wanna figure is personal.
Okay.
And also, I think the accrual is gonna get messed up if we don't, if we say ten hours per month, it should probably say a hundred and twenty hours per year. And then they'll just plug that into Harper's, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Hang on, I, I'm just writing down the twenty-four hour thing, what was the second sentence?
They should, all full-time employees will accumulate a hundred and twenty hours of sick time per year. Um, accrued on a payroll or whatever you said basis, pay period basis.
Pay period.
To leave out the per month, and say a hundred and twenty hours.
Per year, cause when they put it all in the system.
Per.
I think it's part of the reason we have all the problem with accruals that we do.
Yeah.
We're just saying days and hours and per month and per year, and if we just say this is how many hours you get per year, you plug it into the Harper's, and I'm sure it spits out.
It does, yeah.
Three, four per pay period.
I have some questions, okay, on the sick leave.
Accrued on a pay period basis?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but do you physically have to work that month to get the the time?
Well, it accrues, so.
It accrues, but is it accrued because of the shift you work or because you're an employee? So if you came, if you went out sick with something for three months, are you gonna get ten hours a day?
Week. You're not supposed to, because you're working, it takes up your time of work.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it needs to say you have to physically work.
Well, but if you were using your sick days or vacation.
Yeah, but if you did, like, yeah, I understand.
But Susan already asked us a couple of weeks ago.
In the event an employee is unable to report to work because of an illness or injury to the employee, shall notify the department headway, da 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 da. It says somewhere in here that you can't accrue it. I don't know, it doesn't here.
You asked.
It may, it may have been in the other one.
It's in another one, Susan, it's about like.
It's in another one.
I, there's.
She don't have it in there.
There, it has to have a disclaimer, you know, that if you don't physically work, but, and don't use sick leave or vacation time, you will not accumulate.
Right.
Additional sick leave.
Which is why, which is why it's actually, I I'll I'll find out how they do it, it may be better to actually have it as a monthly. Versus an annual, because they could say, well, where's my hundred and twenty hours?
Yeah, or, yeah.
To your, to your point, like July first, I have a hundred and twenty hours, but I haven't worked.
No, 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 but we're saying accruing on a pay period basis.
Yeah.
So that.
Accrued on a monthly.
So if you have a hundred and twenty hours, and you get, what's a hundred and twenty divided by twenty-six? It's like, there's twenty-six barrels, it's four, every pay period base is four point six or something.
Twenty-six.
Hours.
Right.
And if you go out on sick leave, that stops accruing.
Do you accrue it for vacation?
Yes.
Yes.
Sick leave will not accrue for, um, accrues only for days work?
That's. No, because if you take vacation time or sick time, you continue to accrue those same things, because what are we gonna do, micromanage? Oh, you took one vacation day.
So we're keeping that out then?
No, but the problem is when you go on like, like, I'm gonna go on the steep family leave act.
Mm-hmm.
Then I think you can suspend accrual of benefits.
So here's a question.
Which Susan, I thought you posed this question to us a month ago.
I did, and ages ago, and I thought it was taken care of at the end of the year.
So we have an employee who has been out for over a year.
I know.
Who.
Yeah, I don't think we should discuss the particulars of that situation.
A bit, bit vague. Well, but they may, but but let's say we had an employee who was out for six months, would they still be accruing sick time?
Do you actually have a choice, in the way that I recall Susan presenting it, the organization has a choice to make, and you can legally choose either.
Yes, for, for FMLA you can, and for maternity leave and a few other leaves you can, but I'm not sure.
Well, I think you gotta watch it, because, but. Sure about work and salary.
About general, of general.
Well, you.
Situation, like, I don't know if it applies outside those specific federal required things.
Well, huh. Well, if you're on workman's comp and you're on an extended period of time, do you accumulate sick leave and vacation time?
This is a Collins Center, now, I mean, we can all, we can weigh in all day.
That, Russia.
Right.
The question is, the question is under sick leave, right? If I accrued ninety days, right?
How are we gonna accrue ninety days, can we, we don't limit it year over year?
Well, you couldn't, you have a maximum of ninety days, you're gonna accumulate from year to year.
Ninety days?
Well, you couldn't, you have a maximum of ninety days, you're gonna accumulate from year to year days, ninety days, why do, why is that?
Because people get cancer for that, because people.
People get cancer, but that's, we have all these state and federal programs now for that. Family medical leave.
Wow, I used to agree with you.
Oh, yeah, we we can't, we don't participate.
We don't participate in family medical leave.
You don't?
We don't, no.
Why is that?
The town did not do it.
There's actually cost to it on the town side.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, but it sounds like it's free to not, it sounds like.
Well, the employee pays into it.
They pay into it, people in town pay into it as well, I asked this question of the state.
And because you're municipality, you don't need to do it, even if you might otherwise be fired or whatever.
So that, so that's why.
Well, we do have the best, federal, the one that prevents you from getting fired.
Yes, but that you don't.
But you don't get paid, right?
You don't get paid, you don't accumulate.
But the the question is, is if I had ninety days accrued, and I took thirty days of sick time, would I accrue sick time for that month that I took off?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think it should be, because you're using, or company's paying you.
Yeah.
The stuff that you've earned, that's the way we use it.
Yes, I agree with Frank, I mean, otherwise you'd nitpick, you'd have to say, if you have a ten day, you're supposed to work Monday to Friday twice during the annual payroll.
Cause, just think about.
Oh, you took a sick day and a vacation day, so we're only gonna give you three point nine hours.
Well, I suppose like, if you're in a regular year, you get vacation time, you're still accumulating vacation.
Because I act, I I actually think that because you're you're you've gone. You're out of work for more than five days, you fall into the federal, um, of the fed, the federal rules about. Uh, it's not family medical leave, it's, um, I think you fall into those federal rules, and that we don't have to pay, we don't have to, um. We don't have to, I'm gonna find out.
I think it's a great question, and we're not gonna.
Collins Center should should tell us.
We'd be here at midnight, I'd be like, wow.
Yeah, okay, anyway, that's why, that's why, my my only thing that I was gonna say in it is because of, we we don't have. Long-term sick, we do have AFLAC, which is a, which offsets costs, um.
But employees pay for part of that, right?
Employees pay for that, if weren't full, is not optional, that, um, in the chat, and I don't know how long it would take somebody. But I think that we should increase that ninety days a little bit, because somebody could get sick.
Increase the ninety days?
Yeah, cause somebody could get sick, that's all.
How many, how many years of not using it at all would get you ninety?
Well, we're we, well, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing a hundred and twenty.
It's a hundred, only one, it's a hundred and twenty a year.
What, what, a year?
But you only carry over ninety, pardon, hundred and twenty hours.
Well, it's, it's, it says ninety days.
Hours, ninety days?
So ninety, ninety, ninety is eight, so it's seven hundred and twenty.
Well, no, hang on, ninety days, if you accrue, if you accrue a hundred and twenty hours, is how many days?
So that'd be six years of not getting ninety six.
So, but but it would take, what's that?
A hun, we we're giving them a hundred and twenty hours a year, right? Only eight-hour days is that, it's fifteen.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm thinking that, so so ninety, so ninety days.
Yeah, Susan's right.
Fifteen days, it's fifteen days.
Ninety divided by fifteen is si- is six. So it takes six years of not using a single sick day to build up your ninety days, I think that's finally about a ninety.
Right.
I agree with that, not a good question.
If, I mean frankly, if you're out of work for ninety days on sick leave, you do, you have to start asking questions about, should you be on a. Federal or state leave program, because. You know, you start to get to that point of like, is it gonna work out here going?
I do, I do know somebody who accumulated a year and a half of sick time.
Wow.
And then had cancer until the year and a half off.
Well, I've seen similar.
And then pay back?
No.
We're also.
So how does that work out for the town?
Yeah, but you know, they, like, they have that option of the, like, the long-term at at AFLAC.
Well, AFLAC is only, only gives you, it doesn't pay one hundred percent.
Well, uh, I think, but then everything, I mean, workman's comp doesn't pay.
It's a supplement, yeah.
I I just, um. Are you allowed to? Uh, cause I, this happened in Tanny's school, it was a teacher who was out with cancer. She actually took two years off, but. Everybody in the school or a good amount of them gave her their sick time.
There was a sick bank.
With a bank, with a sick bank, yeah.
You have a sick bank, good.
Yeah.
No, we, I didn't say we had one, that what that was, it has happened here.
Yeah, and I think it's gotta be, I think that's gotta be a discretion applied, I don't even really, we should put it in here.
I mean, you know, I mean, it's not required, but it it was that people just said we will donate the, uh, this.
If that's what happened, would happen here.
In, in a tragedy like that, I think we'll handle it on a case by case, I I hate leaving things up case by case, but that's such a hard one, because. What happens when you have, you know, someone who's not, doesn't really have cancer, and you know, they have a sibling or a, a friend. And they're, it could get messy, really. But if it's a legitimate situation, we can make a once-in-a-decade exception.
Yeah, it's a legitimate chance. Um, so I have two questions to ask Lindsay about, one is language for advance warning on vacations.
Yeah.
And the second one is. Language for accrual of what what we do about accrual of. Vacation and sick leave time when not working, and language for expressing that.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think there's something federally about that, whatever, it's not the family medical leave act, what's that other? Federal, I can't remember what the one is, if we were mentioning where. Your, 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 your job is, um, your job is guaranteed, they can't.
You can't fire.
Yeah, what's that?
It's a family medical leave. Which allows eligible employees to take, oh, yeah, twelve weeks of unpaid leave.
Yes, yeah, so you're, you're doing the paid family medical leave, which is state by state.
That's state and and the employee and employer pay.
So we have to find out if on the family medical leave act, if a person is, usually, usually that kicks in after. So many days of not of being employed, if if it allows for accruals or stops accruing.
Why is it not, I mean, these are alphabetic, and it's not here.
What is?
I've got parental leave, I've got military policy. I don't have the family medical leave back. Am I missing him somehow?
Alright, well, you gotta make a handbook with an index.
Yeah. The only other thing, um. Editorially, editorially, I would do with this.
You gotta go have a leaf in there.
I'm so done with this.
Where did you get? Thank you.
The only thing editorially I would do with this is underneath vacation, I would put the new hires.
Oh, there you go. Why is it not?
What about new hires?
So we talked, sick leave has, sick, sick leave talks about new hires, and it's very specific about new hires. PTO is, has something about new hires, it's very specific about accruing, I just think that that could go up under vacation someplace, just in there editorially.
I'm sorry, I was still trying to find out on that, don't be.
I mean, you're saying it doesn't really need to be in here, but I can clarify.
No, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that, it it just. When you look at sick leave, it says sick days begin accruing from day one, and then you go to paid time off, part-time employees accrue one hour paid time off for three hours. And then you look up at vacation, and that that little one thing that for new hires, no, this is, this is ours.
Wait, is this ours or somebody else's? Is this ours?
Yeah, so where, just just where it says new hires.
Yeah.
But they should say new hires up under vacation too.
The current one we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one.
That we were just talking about.
Yeah, but the paid time off, just, it just. It just is consistent from one thing to the next, it lacks some.
So new hires, sick days begin accruing, you just want, we want the same thing for vacation.
I'd have something similar in vacation. You know, during the first ninety days, calendar after hire, employees may use whatever vacation, or no vacation. However, you know, some something like that, just cause it's consistent from.
Yep, no one puts it in right there, so new hires, vacation days begin accruing.
I don't know.
From day one, date of hire, during the first ninety calendar days. Uh, after hire, employees or vacation days are not available? Without prior arrangement, or whatever you wanna call it.
Well, dur- during the, repeat, repeat that again?
Vacation, vacation days begin accruing from day one, date of hire, during the first ninety calendar days after hire, cause remember we.
Yep.
Disconnected probationary period then, the ninety days.
Yep.
Employees may not use vacation time.
They cannot use vacation time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, we're giving, we're giving them a.
Vacation time. Okay. Anything else? Does this, Lindsay, you know?
Well, this is, I mean, this is the bread and butter of this.
No, I know, and I really, we should, I feel like we should have come back to this one sooner, because this one seems super important.
It is. Well, here's the only thing, I don't know if we should clarify, when it says part-time employees, should it just be like, paid time off for sick vacation personal? It's.
Wait, what?
Where do they use?
For part-time employees.
Right.
It's, they, it's a little bit unclear about what that's all about.
I, in other words, in other words, we're, but I think what we did was we made it pay time off rather than having it be sick or vacation.
Curious. Yeah, I just don't know, because you go sick vacation, and then part-time, it doesn't really say what it is, should it just?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
Say like.
Full-time points for priorities, set of policies, and this should say part-time employees.
Well, it's basically, it's, but it should, it should say part-time employees and then paid time off, like how this says vacation.
Right.
It should say part-time employees, paid time off.
Paid time off. Okay, there you go.
Maybe, maybe there should be, oh, it's all paid time.
I just don't have any issue saying there's no distinction between vacation and sick.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it is eight o'clock.
All right, let's just put in there, stay personal or or vacation falls onto this. I've always been kind of confused on the sick time thing, so I just wanna see it in paper, so I can redo it at some point, and then I'll come and ask you questions.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I thought you said nasty questions.
That's what I am.
She always comes in with nasty questions, I have to.
That's why she hates to take, I have to run and close my glass sheet.
And I did have one note in here under the paid time off for part-time employees. It says during the first ninety calendar days after hire, employees may use one paid day off, I I think it's fifty hours, we're doing hours everywhere.
Yes, yeah.
One shift, since their shifts may be different.
But that's the trouble, is the.
One shift, or one partial shift?
One paid. One paid shift off.
Yeah, because there's, some of them work different hours.
That was part of my concern, there we go, right?
So.
Paid shift off?
Yes, that's what I think it should be, cause it's definitely, it's like, Melanie works twelve, twelve-hour, sixteen-hour shifts on Sunday, Saturday.
We went back to the whole thing with third apartment, why, it's eight hours.
Well, fire department's gonna be.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, no, but I mean, like, the reason why it's ninety-six is because, yeah.
Exactly, and and that's why I think we're probably, exactly, I think they're gonna have to have. I think we need more policies that are different for the the police department than we currently have, this is.
I agree, because what we have is working, but we should put it in writing what the policy is.
And we should ask him.
So we have an understanding, people leave.
He thinks there's a problem, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, one paid shift off, do we have to define shift?
No.
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, that would be.
On this quickly.
It's eight oh three. Does anyone feel compelled to keep going to personal policies?
No.
No, no, well, um, we did not adopt this because we're still working.
Yes. Um.
Town administrator updates.
I don't, uh, updates, what I have, well, in, updates, I guess, yeah, um, the Bear Town Mountain Road tree.
Yeah, it's right in the email.
It, uh, it's being scheduled to be cut down during night.
Yeah, June, that's, they're all all set.
Yep, next week, yep, yep, um, a question about. The assistant town clerk.
Yep.
The assistant town clerk is still the assistant town clerk, that that position today, I've not left that, are we, do we continue?
They started what?
Well, they were, they were appointed as the assistant town clerk when we appointed them.
Um, I think if we go back to the, yeah.
Yeah. And you've set a date?
I, I, look at the appointment, find the wording, we were, we were careful.
I will. I will.
Uh, and I think it was until we had a new town clerk.
Okay.
And when would, when did we do that about, you know, why, because I could.
It would've been like in Jan, uh, January, I think it was.
January, right?
Cause I got finance very clearly.
Yeah, I just don't know, while you're looking at that, okay?
Well, one thing at a time.
What?
One thing at a time.
He's looking at the answer. I'm not the only one that that has some.
My, my ADHD a little bit there, yeah, it's horrible.
Another feeling.
Wait. December first, twenty twenty-four to March first, twenty twenty-five, search. Eleven. So. In December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
It's going through on here.
The board agreed by unanimous consent to Gary Shaw working as assistant town clerk for twenty dollars per hour, holding six regular office hours per week. And as a temporary job until Chris is able to return to his usual responsibilities. So technically, that never happened, but you could. Pretty easily read into that, that we, Chris didn't return his usual responsibilities, so we hired someone to do rest of his year.
Right, right, right.
But he hasn't worked in sick time, he's got.
No, he's not.
Yeah. Um, and then.
Has he worked at all?
Um, the only time he's worked recently has been election.
Election, yeah.
And then.
I'm sure he's wasn't.
If you go back.
Well, he's covered under the election workers for that too.
Okay.
If you go back to November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Chris Andrews, Roger updated it, Chris Andrews, town clerk will appoint Gary Shaw as assistant town clerk by writing the appointment down in the email, town council approved the process, Gary will be able to complete the duties of the office when Chris is not available. And we appointed Marius temporary town clerk, and we got an open meeting law complaint for, um, quick thing, that's true, does that basically answer the questions?
I think so, I think that's December tenth.
The, uh, town clerk appoints the assistant town clerk, so we don't even have to.
Yes.
Do it, do it.
Okay.
Right, so that's why.
But you might need to talk about about whether she still wants me to be or needs one.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, honestly, I don't, I personally don't think it's a terrible thing to have an assistant town clerk on the books, because.
You don't wanna happen.
What if you have, I know, but and.
It's not that old.
And and what if somebody gets sick, get an election?
I I agree.
Right, like that, it can happen, it may not happen often, it's only like one or two days a year, but.
I mean, the topic.
No, we need, you need, you need an assistant town clerk, and it's kind of an on budget thing right now, but not entirely, because we have money for. Things like kind of meeting and census, so let's.
So. If that, if it does stay, when an election happens, cause you paid the assistant town clerk wages.
Which is different, what's the election worker wage?
Uh, like fifteen bucks an hour versus. It's like, it's like three different wages, so there's the, there's the basic election worker, then there's the warden, then there's the counters. And he's, he's, as assistant town clerk, he's more than the basic, of the, 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 the basic election worker and the warden.
Well, you know what we did with the twenty, was we tried to split it because. You know, not being a full town clerk and having all those responsibilities and capabilities, but also being more than an election worker, so I think. May, I don't know if we need to clarify, but I would say on principle, yeah, because if the town clerk.
Right.
As in a medical emergency and needs to run the town, the assistant town clerk carries out all of the duties, so.
Is an acting, okay.
Right.
They should be compensated, they're not another election worker, they're basically.
Right, yeah.
Only carry out, I said duties, they can't, so yes, I would say yes.
Alright.
I would agree.
Do we need to clarify that? If we need to clarify it, let us know, we can vote on it, but it might just be as simple as the town clerk.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I'll talk to Amanda about that, since it seems that the assistant town clerk falls more under that position.
Right.
Managing than, you know, uh, the, uh, appointing and all that as well, um.
What's that?
I know, you tell it down there, cause we're all around you.
Just as a FYI, I have spoken to Don Clausen as a member of the Monterey Water Company. And they, they, Monterey Water Company, it's Don Clausen, has concerns about the fire company, fire department, um, having, being there twenty-four seven. Because of the.
Grated water drop.
Rare water drop, so it's just out there, I just wanna put it out there, we don't have to have a conversation about it, we just, I just wanna make you aware.
What would we do about it?
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, if it really got. There's not gonna be that much draw, I mean.
If push comes to shove, you drill well, but I think the first question is.
Right.
Can we monitor usage?
I think we can't monitor, I was talking to Steve Moore about that.
No, but there's, Steve Moore doesn't know everything about the water company.
Yeah, but I, well, I can say, Dush, your dad probably knows the most.
We're done.
But you, they know what the usage is coming out every day, but they don't know where the individual usage is. Cause they take, they.
I think this is why they're talking about, they may put, they may put a meter up there.
I think a meter makes sense, I mean, it's good to know, I think push comes to shove, if for whatever reason it can't sustain, we look at well, right, like everybody else in town. That said. Um, we still, we fill trucks sometimes.
At least that might actually be able to happen.
Oh, you do it?
Yeah. And that's like, might be, not from empty, but if we use a little bit, it might be a few hundred gallons anyway. So, if you're talking about filling trucks, if you're talking about skating rink in the winter, flooding the rink? So I wonder what, one or, you you're talking about right now that we have one person there twenty-four seven, so that's gotta be, I mean, when you add it up over the course, it's gotta be significant, but. Is it a den? So that's gotta be, I mean, when you add it up over the course, it gotta be significant, but is it a dent compared to filling trucks and
Yeah.
and skating, and maybe it becomes, if it really becomes a concern, maybe we strike a deal where we don't, where we do something else a little bit differently, I don't wanna speak for the fire department or anything, but.
Oh, you're raising.
No, I mean, you're actually, the the fire, it's a fire department issue, it's not a fire company issue.
No, but I think.
No, I'll I'll bring that, I'll bring that up to, uh, because I didn't think, I didn't know about the trucks, and you're right about the skating rink, that does come from that water, right, that's town water.
Yes.
Yeah, or not town water, it's water company water.
Water company water.
So, um, yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask Don about that. Uh, and then my last one thing is, I don't know if you saw this, I don't know how to respond to it.
Can I follow up one thing on the water issue?
Yeah, sure.
I was just curious, like, what is the average water usage per day per person? And, this is such a horrible way to get information, but it's looking like ballpark fifty to seventy-five. Yeah, per person, per day.
Based on the total volume and the number of people.
Super.
Right.
It's not two and it's not three hundred.
Right.
But fifty to seventy-five, and so I, it is a, it's an interesting question, but, yeah.
I'll talk to him about it. Um, I don't know if I, I forwarded this, well, it came to the select board Monterey, but I wanted to, uh, you know, address it because it is a eighth grade student at Mon Everly.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
About that. Amendment required.
I don't know if you wanna.
I have no idea what to, I like, I just saw it about like.
I I don't, I don't know where he's actually talking, because the only place I could think of is Lombardo property, and they're not gonna put skate park there.
I mean. But I also thought, like, this will sound weird, but it it reads as though they don't know that there is a playground here.
I know, no, I can reply.
I was a little, like, so what are you gonna say?
I I'll, I can reply, yeah, no one else needs to worry about that.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure it didn't get like, because it's a little eighth grader.
Do you know?
No, but I.
I know.
I was going to and then somebody fired, but, um, I misclarified, said we have a playground. I mean, it's also, I think it's a good thing that a middle schooler is learning about.
Well, you're right, you said, that's right, right.
I agree, so, I just, yeah.
Is he, does anybody know if he's a Monterey resident?
I don't, I don't know, it's, I I looked up the last name, the last.
Because I would be concerned that a Monterey resident didn't know that there's a playground here.
If a playground, let's just say that a skate park.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but it mentioned one, you've got a playground because there is no playground, which is a little confusing because we haven't had playground since.
Playground there.
Oh, that's, that is confusing, yeah, the skating, skate park is.
Was there a playground when you moved here?
Yeah, so that, it was always come this way, it was there, yeah, forever.
Yes, we had a playground.
For all the time.
And we have a new playground, so, right.
It's very fancy now, but.
I don't know, where are we back in the first part?
Metal and sharp objects, right, right there.
Well, it's a, well, it should be made.
Probably let, probably let, hey, that's.
I remember when we were talking about the new playground, I don't know why this, it's with me because I was like, Scott, uh, who was on the board, said, I only have one requirement for the new playground, kids need to be able to get hurt on it.
I I get.
And we did not tell our.
I do get that, though. Especially after being honest.
Oh, did you guys see my new laptop? Uh, thank you.
Was it a hardship?
That's it for me, I'm also.
Uh, honestly, we have a Berkshire regional transportation thing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I could, upon this, still build for the next year.
Yeah.
Are you willing?
I missed the main meeting because I was away, but it kind of.
Was that the RTA?
Yeah.
Oh, I, so I went to the most recent Southern Berkshire EMS meeting, which was yesterday. Um, I I don't know that there's a lot to transmit, but it was interesting, so they had three people from Northfield. The TA, the chair of the select board, and the chief of EMS. Um, talking about their, their, I, it's hard for me to even call it regionalization. So their situation is pretty different than ours in that they have four towns, Northfield and three other towns that have a longstanding cooperative relationship in a bunch of ways. So it's not really, even though they're separate towns, it's it's not really equivalent.
Northfield and Deerfield are.
She, she, no, she, I couldn't give you the names, but they were actually kind of, they're small towns, I think.
Warwick.
Would be, um.
Act like they're smaller than us, we're pretty small.
Uh, well, Northfield's three thousand, but I have the impression that the adjacent towns are
Gil.
are smaller, um, Gil, Irving, which ends only half of Irving, and
Warwick.
Vernonton, Vernonston.
Vernonston?
Vernonston, um.
Very scary. So Gary supplies, supplier comes out of Gil, and I've never been there or heard of it.
So the total is about seven thousand people for half of Irving and Northfield and Gil and Vernonston. But I think Northfield's only about three thousand. Um, interestingly, they serve additional communities, each of which pays sort of differently. They're trying to serve, the the four towns serve a hundred square miles, but with the additional places they service, because those places don't have any ambulances, they're serving a hundred and forty square miles. It's, it can be a sixty-minute transit to get there, I'm like.
To get there, then you have to get to the person to the hospital.
Yes. I I'm not even sure what that translates, like, he said sixty minutes, and as far as I could, I understood it meant sixty minutes to get to the patient, which I was like, wow.
But are they making any progress on the, any of this stuff?
Who?
The the committee?
The, at at this point, there there, we're still in like the information gathering phase. They're, they've been collecting data on calls, on frequency, on location. They're about to, they've now collected most of that data, and they're about to start working with Berkshire Regional Planting Commission to use the GIS systems to actually plot it, because they can use that to try to figure out where would be the best places to have.
Well, that that's good, it's a, it's a.
Yes, no, I, it's a lot of work to do this, like, honestly.
Well, I got no doubt about it.
Um, and, uh, you know, the data they got was, a lot of it was a mess, it's, it has to be cleaned up before it can be used, like, whatever.
Yeah.
It it's a significant thing, um.
I'd probably look at the dispatch just at the same time.
Um, so, I don't know, it's like, we're, we're definitely, it's an eighteen-month horizon, and I think it will be the eighteen months. I thought it was interesting what Northfield had gone through, it's not completely comparable for a bunch of reasons. Um, and they have a history of the ambulance being a separate service, and they stayed with that. So that's certain, they have a fire service that's separate also, but it's always been part of the town, the ambulance service. Even though I think it was volunteer, it still was not a private nonprofit, but they are billing.
Not a private nonprofit.
I I have, they're going up to seven people, including the chief, as of July one.
They're actually doing it.
Fire people, ambulance, they do use, they use the fire people like as on-call, because a bunch of the firefighters are the amtes.
It's funny.
But they're not, they're not paid, they're not full-time employees, they're gonna have six full-time employees plus a full-time chief.
And volunteers, tobacco, or the?
Yes, and volunteers, tobacco, they have three ambulances, one that's always in service and two that are back. But they're serving eight thousand people on a a hundred and forty square miles, I imagine, there.
That's a lot of, that's.
Yeah, he said, he, I, actually, someone did ask him, I think they have about sixteen, a thousand to twelve hundred calls here.
Wow.
So I I don't know, that the numbers don't quite add up to me.
Oh, yeah.
But the the ones they quoted, um, but I don't know either, it was an interesting conversation.
Yeah, sure, well. Shall we get into the minutes?
Sure.
April eighth and April ninth.
I didn't say that.
I I I looked at.
You're.
I questioned, I lost it.
What was that?
I'm sorry. I forgot it.
If it's important.
I'll remember it at three o'clock, so.
If it's important, you'll remember.
I will. We're on four.
You know where to find us.
I will always track you down. Good meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. And think about taking our minutes.
I I make a motion and we make Mickey the official note taker for this.
Twenty second, run Mickey, run.
I quit that job at eighteen.
If nominated, I will not run, if elected, I will not serve.
I tried.
She does have the job.
I know, right?
Well, I looked at both your notes, I saw your changes, I was make a motion and we accept both, like, four and four nine.
Um, the only question I have, is one where I raise a question rather than making an edit, which is the
The amount on the fire.
The amount on the fire thing, or they're two different amounts, was it on the same document?
Not on that.
Um, and I'm not sure where the four twelve one came from, did we, did it get changed mid-meeting? So the first one says four hundred and twelve thousand, seven twenty-six, and the second one says four hundred and four thousand, one fifty-nine ninety-six, and I think that's what we ended up using on the warrant.
Right.
And it's possible I had one number and then I had, I I didn't have the updated version of the.
It could have gotten lost in a lot of different ways.
Right, no, I think, I think it got, I think it might have gotten altered mid-meeting because of a difference in health insurance or something, that I had used the wrong number and you caught it. So I think it might legitimately have been altered, but it isn't mentioned that it was altered, so I think either we should make the numbers the same or we should mention that an error was caught or something. I don't exactly remember how that, I think it was health insurance.
Yeah, it was health insurance, yeah.
Well, the top one's harder to change because it was quoted.
Okay.
You know, I think you sent an email and I somehow had that as a quote.
Okay.
Um. But not that we could, I mean, mention it one way or the other.
Um. Yeah, where's the four oh four? Uh.
Were, what if we just say that fire department initial funds for transition go full-time, department were revised or something? The calculation was revised.
To four hundred thousand, you wanna say, where do you wanna say the, in the first quote, by the first quote, or?
No, by the second.
By the second. Okay. Were revised to four oh four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that word.
My name is like recently revised.
Just revised, so it happened in the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were revised, okay, were revised.
I I don't remember how many, when the, I think probably the the finance committee must have been here, because that committee would have had.
I think, did I propose, did I propose, um, not doing the full family plan?
Yeah. But I had also put in, I I'm pretty sure I had let, made, made in a bad call and called the wrong line and made an error in the calculation, so both might have occurred.
Yeah, that, that health insurance. All right, well, I think that settles that.
Okay. All right, I think that was the only actual question, the rest are all little, little things. So I will second that we accept the minutes as revised.
Of April eighth and ninth.
April eighth, oh, yeah, and ninth, were there any questions on the ninth one? I don't think so, there wasn't even a lot.
There is a small change.
Yeah.
That's, um, all right, so let's go on approving the minutes of April eighth and ninth.
Yes.
Yes, approved unanimously. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do a vote on the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
At eight twenty-four.
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous, vote to adjourn at, uh, eight twenty-four PM. And.
Enjoy your time.
Spanish, you do?